We're going to call to order the February 26, 2018 Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order. Before we start, I do have a couple of comments. Originally on our agenda that was posted online, we had an item related to a report from the Stormwater Task Force. The item was removed because that was added prematurely. The report hadn't received all the feedback from all the people that sat on the task force and approvals who were working on it all for the last year. So, we pulled it. It was put out there inadvertently. It'll be sent back to the group, to the task force, for a final discussion and edits, and I expect an official recommended version to come back from that task force so we can take a look at it. So, for any of you that may have seen that or are here for tonight regarding that matter, it was put on there for a short period of time, and then we realized the error and removed it. So, all right. Well, we're going to begin tonight with an invocation given by Commissioner Melanie Macy, and then it's going to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
As we begin our work in Royal Oak tonight, we are still feeling the reverberations from the most recent tragedy in our country that tore children from their parents and extinguished the bright lights of seventeen souls. We are united across all boundaries in our national grief and determined message of love for Parkland, Florida. As ever, even at a time overwhelmed by shock, fear, and anger, a new day dawns and a new chance to make this world a better and safer place for our children. May we seek always to build our country on a foundation of love and caring for each other so that such demented hatred has no place and cannot fester into action. May we each commit to making changes in our own lives to uphold our individual responsibility in creating the safe and just community we desire. May we be empowered, citizens and elected officials alike, to make brave and difficult decisions so that each new day that dawns brings us closer to a safe, peaceful, thriving, and inclusive world for ourselves and for our children. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right. That brings us to item number four on the agenda, which is a proclamation honoring the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments' 50th anniversary. Is Kathleen Lamaco here? All right, Kathleen, how are you? The SEMCOG has been around for fifty years doing great work, and we thought it was appropriate to read a proclamation tonight to the fine work that SEMCOG does on behalf of all the communities here in Southeast Michigan. Whereas the SEMCOG was formed in 1968 as a voluntary council of governments for the seven counties in Southeast Michigan and began with fifty-nine charter members. Whereas today, one hundred and seventy members, including cities, villages, townships, intermediate school districts, community colleges, and all seven counties belong to SEMCOG. And whereas SEMCOG brought together the Metropolitan Detroit Regional Planning Commission, its transportation land use study, and the Supervisors Inter-County Committee setting the tone for much of the work performed today and into the future. And whereas SEMCOG has promoted informed decision-making by providing insightful data analysis and direct assistance to members, promoted efficient use of dollars for infrastructure investment and governmental effectiveness, developed regional solutions going beyond the boundaries of individual local governments, and advocated on behalf of Southeast Michigan in both Lansing and Washington, DC. And whereas through regional planning, training, public outreach to member governments, SEMCOG has supported efficient management and improvement to public infrastructure such as roads, bridges, water, sewer, and stormwater, reduced traffic congestion while increasing traffic safety, improved air quality, growth of business and entrepreneurship, education, and the region's workforce and job connection. And whereas the future holds vast numbers of critical issues for the region, from the integration of autonomous vehicles to the ability to serve our aging population, SEMCOG will play a vital role ensuring all Southeast Michigan's residents have access to services and amenities important in their daily life. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission hereby congratulate the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments on their first fifty years and look forward to being part of their continued success in the next fifty years and beyond. Kathleen?
Thank you.
Thank you. You're free to say your name.
I want to thank you for recognizing our 50th anniversary and also for the city's participation in SEMCOG. I want you to know that you're well represented by the delegate, who is Sharon Douglas, and the alternate, who is City Manager Johnson, in our governance structure. And I want to encourage you as we're -- to all attend our -- we have an exhibit at the Detroit Historical Museum, and I know Council Member, or Commissioner Douglas, was there, but encourage any of you that want to see some things about our region and the assets that we have to celebrate, that it's a great exhibit, and I want to invite you to attend that. With that, I want to also introduce to you Amy Malmer, who is our Membership Manager. And she just wants to say a few words about some of our work and how it interacts with the city.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to tell you, spend a moment to say what SEMCOG is up to currently. We are -- next month, the General Assembly will be acting on a Water Resources Plan, and then we'll start to focus on implementation of that plan. The plan addresses the blue economy, natural resources, and infrastructure. We're also in the process of developing a regional transportation plan that the General Assembly will act on about a year from now. And along with some technical analysis that we've started, we've done quite a bit of public input, including a statistically significant survey, more of a, just a public opinion survey that was available online, and held outreach meetings in each of the seven counties. Very specific to Royal Oak, SEMCOG is proud to support and provide Transportation Alternatives Program, or TAP, funding to expand and enhance the city's bicycle network. Over the last few years, SEMCOG has awarded funds for bicycle lanes, signage, and facilities in support of Royal Oak's growing non-motorized network. We were also pleased to feature Royal Oak at a SEMCOG University Workshop, Training Session on Parks and Recreation, where City Manager Don Johnson presented the city's Smart Park, which is a great example of creating place and supports several of our regional plans. And finally, speaking of parks, just wanted to thank Commissioner Douglas for serving on our Parks and Recreation Task Force, and want to invite all of you and let you know you're all welcome to get involved at SEMCOG by attending training or participating in Task Force. So, thank you for your membership, and thank you for this proclamation. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Let's give a round to SEMCOG. All right, that brings us to item number five tonight, public comment. We've got a full house tonight. It's good to see everyone come out. Just by a show of hands, how many people are here to talk about burms? Maybe I should ask how many people are here to not talk about burms? How many people are here to talk about Normandy Oaks? Okay, very good. So, it was so many people here to talk about burms, before we start public comment, I just want to make a few points. We obviously have had a lot of information going around town, and before you come up and express your opinion on burms, I just wanted to, you know, give a little insight about why we're here today, where we've been. So, obviously, these burms were installed in 1970s. They've been around for a long time. This commission, last year, did commission a study to understand, you know, are the burms still effective? Are they being used the way they need to be used? Are they controlling traffic? Are they protecting pedestrian safety? We had a decision in front of us whether or not we needed to invest more into them to upkeep them, to maintain them, and just like any good government would do, we wanted to make sure that we had all the facts before we made a decision. And so, our city staff went out, and they commissioned a study. We got some data back. The information has matriculated through a citizen-represented traffic committee, and they voted unanimously to keep the burms. And so, as is due process, the issue is circling back here. My sense is, and I can't speak for everyone, that, you know, keeping the burms seems to be, you know, relatively a positive thing. Of course, we'll have that discussion and make that vote, but I just want to make sure everybody knows that the city's intent was never at all to commission a study to remove the burms. It was to make sure that we make the very best decisions and spend our money in the very wisest way possible. So, I know there's been some confusion out there, but understand that we want to make sure we have all the facts before we make any decisions. So, with that, I'll give a few comments about public comment. You're going to be sick of hearing from me by the end of the evening, but I promise we'll get to all the topics. Just a few ground rules for those of you who may be new to the commission meetings. The city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now's the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that any comments be made to the commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. It's the only time tonight to address the city commission on agenda items because we don't have any public hearings scheduled for this evening. If you wish to speak tonight, wait till you're recognized by me, the mayor. Come up to the podium. For the record, we ask that you state your name and address, and please be mindful that we do want to hear from everyone who wishes to speak tonight. So, comments are limited to five minutes or less, and there's a timer at the podium to help keep track of your allotted time. Please don't think I'm rude. We have a lot of people here tonight. I'm going to cut you off at five minutes. Don't take it personally, you know. We can always talk on the phone later. If you don't wish to speak tonight, don't hesitate to email us. I know a number of you have emailed us, and we've been in conversation. And note that we won't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll address those questions when the agenda topic is discussed. And for things that aren't on the agenda that come up, our city manager is taking notes, and he does his best to figure out a way to respond to those matters, especially if he gets your name and address, and he may ask you to provide more information, you know, to get those issues resolved. So, who's first? Who, Mr. Colo, up here in the front? Number seven.
Close, one.
Oh, number one. We don't have a prescription plan, do we, for mayors?
Mr. Mayor, I am Brandon Colo of 600 East Hudson Avenue. I'm here tonight representing the Lawson Park Neighborhood Association. We're here asking that you leave the berm system intact. Before I continue, I'd like to take a minute and ask the audience to show of hands if you're here to support leaving the burms in tonight. Yeah, that's pretty astounding. As you can see, many residents are passionate about preserving the character of our neighborhood. Tonight, nine members of our neighborhood association will speak to you. Our topics will include a history of this historic neighborhood, a discussion on the format of the study conducted, the opportunity cost of removing the burms, new traffic routes that could be created, existing city services, the character of the neighborhood and its future. We realize that there are many topics to cover, so we commit to keep our comments to about three minutes. While you are not here for my group tonight, our basis accusations. I am personally troubled by some of the political posturing that I've seen regarding this issue. I've seen a social media campaign throwing mud at our elected officials that is just unfounded and pits a black eye on our cause. We believe that facts alone are enough to preserve the character of our neighborhood. Finally, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the other members of the commission, that have taken time to respond to our calls and emails. This is a really important issue for the South Side neighborhood, and I appreciate you reaching out and working with us to come to a resolution. My group tonight will be represented with a green sticker so you can always recognize who we are, and we're also going to pass out copies of this blowout that you see, so you can have that for reference while we're going over the discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colo. All right, who's next? I see a sixteen here in the front, or a ten. Oh, number two? Okay, we'll go with number two.
I typed this up so I wouldn't waste your time, so I can get right to the point. Good evening. My name is Barbara Burris, and I live at 1211 Irving, and I'd like to talk briefly about the history of the burms and the neighborhood they protect. In 1977, my husband and I moved into our first house on Irving. Although we liked the house, we didn't plan to stay in the neighborhood because of a number of drawbacks, primarily the industry a few streets away and the truck and other traffic on Irving. It was a tough time in Michigan, and men were hawking Texas papers on Main Street advertising jobs. We joked that if a cannon was shot down Main Street, it wouldn't hit anyone. But less than two years later, things began to change for my neighborhood. After innumerable complaints to the city from residents about traffic and blight from the industrial area, the city captured some federal funds that had not been used and were about to go back to the feds, and they used these funds to construct the burms in 1979. The neighborhood started to improve immediately. People began moving in and fixing up houses long before the Renaissance that affected the rest of Royal Oak. It's important to remember that this improvement began as a result of the burms, which created the desirable dead ends that cut off the industrial and other traffic and ensured less crime and a people-friendly neighborhood. Housing prices went up, and the city benefited from the increased tax base. The second major threat to the neighborhood came from the I-696 Expressway that was completed ten years later in 1989. It is a continuing threat because of a peculiar and unprecedented exit like no other in its entire course. Every other exit on the Expressway opens to a major thoroughfare. Only the unique Mohawk exit goes straight into a residential area. The burms prevented freeway traffic from entering the neighborhood, just as the burms and walls constructed along the service drive from Main Street to Campbell protect streets and neighborhoods from freeway cut-through traffic. The third threat to the neighborhood is the large area of high-density housing which is replacing the industrial area. We're happy to see a change to residential, but condos and apartments generally have shorter-term residents, and unlike an industrial situation, the residents and their guests come and go at all hours of the day and night. This large area of high-density housing will bring significantly more traffic than the industrial area did. Good city planning separates high-density housing wherever possible from single-family neighborhoods. The burms are doing that. To sum up, although the industrial threat to the neighborhood which caused the burms to be built is phasing out, the two subsequent threats, the Expressway opening into a residential neighborhood, and the large area of high-density housing that is replacing the old industrial area, will not go away. The burms have been protecting this now flourishing, single-family neighborhood from all three threats. Let me conclude by saying that I attended the previous commission's meeting where a traffic study was approved as part of a study for the master plan, as you recall, Sharon Douglas, I think you introduced it that way, from after the commissioners had clearly indicated that they saw no need to remove the burms. It's puzzling how this limited study turned into a recommendation to remove the burms. The traffic committee was right when they rejected the study's recommendation to remove the burms that protect this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I also ask is, you know, we hold off on applause. I think sometimes if somebody has a countering position, they may feel less likely to come up and speak, so out of respect for everyone, it's going to drag the meeting on a little longer, and we just want to make sure on any issue you come to talk about, just to, I know it's good to be positive and whatnot, but we want to be consider of those that may have a different opinion. Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Ron Arnold, and I'm at 1102 Irving Avenue. Myself and my family have lived in Royal Oak for eighteen years. We moved from Florida. What a choice. I received a doctoral degree in education in 1996 from the University of Central Florida, so I got good experience with completing the dissertation and the thesis for my master's degree. The study for the diverters was a decent effort by Fleisen, Vandenbrink, but it was flawed from the start and doesn't represent the true traffic levels present in the neighborhood. Fleisen, Vandenbrink were limited in reaching a sound conclusion due to a number of factors I'm going to cover. The study is flawed in its design and execution in four ways. Number one, a classic research mistake was committed in the RFP. The Fleisen, Vandenbrink study was initially flawed by the language used in the request for proposal, directing potential suppliers to create a comprehensive report with recommendations regarding the removal of the current road closures. In research terms, this is a failure because it includes a language regarding the perceived result, which can influence the research that follows. Number two, the measurement component of the study is flawed by its timing and number. The study's counting period was on a Thursday in early November from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., a weekday that doesn't represent the peak traffic flow through the neighborhood. This would be classified as a low sample that represents a limited view of the traffic on the streets of the neighborhood, a neighborhood that is already under barricade enforced parking restrictions during our teats and beats. An approach that would be more valid would include all-day monitoring over multiple days, including weekends, spread across several periods during the year. In addition, the study did not address the currently approved high-density residential and mixed-use projects in the South End, the Harrison Two, and the upcoming mixed-use project in Ferndale on Bermuda and 696. Scott will be further covering those future developments. Number three, the survey instrument and method of collecting data do not meet standard research criteria. The survey instrument was a plain white postcard that directed potential respondents to a website that attempted to gather their input. This instrument is suspect in several ways. Its visual design was nondescript and could have been easily lost in the volume of mail that comes in the weeks before an election. It was a one-time effort. More complete surveys offer multiple points of contact and multiple ways to gather responses. The only way to complete the study was to visit an unknown internet site, something that potential respondents may have been advised against during the Equifax data breach last summer. Having a website as the only way of participating in the survey assumes access to the internet, not always true. The wording of the survey questions seems redundant and confusing, offering response choices such as "wait for study," "wait for recommendations," "more information required," those three are essentially the same choice, and "take some of the traffic control devices away," which ones, based on what? A more clear approach would have been to ask a simple question like, "should the existing traffic control devices be maintained in the neighborhood?" and then drill down to specifics. The survey questions seem to focus on residents' driving habits, perhaps indicating that this effort concentrated on resident trips and not the real root of the problem, which is cut-through traffic from motorists using residential streets to get to and from downtown Royal Oak via the freeway exit. Without this exit, this would be a typical neighborhood with average traffic and no need for diverters. And number four, the cost estimates offered in the study seem incorrect. Based on an internet search of city street paving costs, the cost estimates offered in the study are incorrect, but and are also not referenced or footnoted as to where the cost information originated. Also, the conclusion that the new neighborhood interconnects streets that removing the diverters would create, Irving and Hudson, would need no significant maintenance due to minimal traffic is not substantiated. In summary, this survey effort would not meet common academic research standards and would be rejected and returned for additional refinement and research. For the reasons outlined here, the traffic committee rightfully unanimously rejected the conclusion of the study on January 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Arnold. All right, who's next? We'll do it with number four. I guess we'll go in order. All right, come on up, number four.
Thank you.
I feel so weird. We haven't met yet, and I'm just calling you number four.
It's all right. My name's Susan Gilbert. You can call me Sue.
Susan Gilbert, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too. Thank you, everybody from the commission. I live at 1219 Irving with my husband, Bob. We've been residents of Royal Oak for twenty years. Much like Barb, we moved to the area and thought, "Well, might this just be a temporary place?" And twenty years later, no, it looks like we're here for the duration. We love the city, and we feel that sustaining and maintaining and reinforcing the traffic barriers provide the continued protection that the South End requires from non-residential traffic. I've been a big proponent of blocking this non-residential traffic. I have dogs. We walk in the park, and I am positive that it is not the neighbors that are throwing liquor bottles out the window onto the lawns of the park. I'm positive of this. These traffic barriers also serve as a viable protection for residents and visitors that come to the parks in the South End to participate in organized sports, as well as the spectators, parents, grandparents, neighbors, people that come to watch their children play ball and soccer at these events. The intentional slowing and diverting of traffic is necessary with children, pedestrians, and pets in the area. Over the past few years, the city has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on new play structures in the parks, and it's wonderful. It's beautiful. In the parks in the South End, we have been beneficiaries of some of that equipment. We would like to see the funding that was discussed to put towards removing the barriers diverted into the parks to continue to improve the parks. We have two beautiful tennis courts. We have half courts at our parks. Hudson Park, Lawson Park, Don Darrow Park, and Franklin Park all have a tremendous amount of traffic during the summer. Children come to play with toys that are just in the park permanently in the sandboxes. It's really a wonderful sight to see the neighbors getting together in the parks. All four parks could benefit from continued maintenance and upgrades from these monies and redirecting the funding and continuing to create an inclusive approach to bring these traffic barriers in for continued, I don't even know what to say, more trees, just continued care for these neglected burms. Personally, I adopted the berm at the end of Irving. I plant flowers. I buy mulch. I love it. Gardening is my hobby. I'd like to see somebody adopt every berm in the neighborhood. I think it would be beautiful. You know, we've got some great things going. I'd like to see it continued. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
We appreciate it. There you go with number five? All right. This is easy for me.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Medurski. I live at 1014 Longfellow for thirty-three years, and I have lived in Royal Oak since the seventies, before the burms and before 696. And my talk is, "All roads lead to Longfellow." Our residential neighborhood, as you have heard, has the distinction of being the only neighborhood adjacent to the only exit between I-75 and Woodward. As vehicles exit Bermuda or travel the service drive, their northbound journey is impeded by a wall, a half-berm at Mohawk, and "do not enter" signs, all which reroute you to the next available open street, which is Longfellow. New technology is reinforcing this pattern. Google has updated its maps, and Android has introduced "avoid traffic," which helps you spot traffic jams in real time. Another app, Traffic Nearby, displays congested roads so you can reroute without ever even having to enter a destination. Longfellow transverses .5 miles. Vehicles travel .3 miles, picking up speed before they reach the first stop sign. Lawson Park is situated in this stretch. With two dozen new homes on the old school site and the new condos with more to come, the park has seen increased activity, more baseball games, parents, pets, and kids running out between the park cars. Oversized trucks delivering everything from beer to backhoes use our street midday, despite the no-traffic signs, no-through-traffic signs, and the presence of a designated truck route. In the midnight hours, we endure the bar-closing traffic, and in the summer, we listen to the swarm of motorcycles. Yes, we have signage, but it's mostly ignored. We greatly appreciate the efforts of our police, but realize that they have more important duties than to babysit our street. Neither do we wish to restrict our neighbors north of Lincoln from using our street or subjecting them to fines. I firmly believe that opening any of the burms, including Harrison, will only exasperate these problems. Longfellow will continue to be a cut-through, and Harrison will become the new east-west cut-through. Our street is already badly in need of repairs and could use the dollars saved by keeping the burms. Opening up Harrison would be like a breach in the levee. Traffic, like water, will always take the path of least resistance, Longfellow. Therefore, I am asking the council to, one, leave all of the burms intact, and, two, consider the installation of a half-berm similar to the one that's at the corner of Mohawk and Irving, or another traffic-calming device to the southeast corner of Longfellow and Irving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medurski. We have, is that number, are we up to number six? All right.
Thank you for letting me, oh, thank you for letting me explain why burms do not interfere with city services and safety. I'm Nancy Poprovskiy. I'm Nancy Poprovsky. I've lived in Royal Oak for 30 years and on a berm street 1119 Batavia for 15 years. I'm speaking on behalf of a large contingent of neighbors. F&amp;V Engineering studied the diverted traffic areas and said that the berms threaten city services and safety. Their survey took only one day in November 2017. I've observed traffic in these areas for 15 years. Here are some of my observations. I asked our trash collector if it was hard to perform his job due to the berms. He chuckled and replied, "No, ma'am. I learned how to drive in reverse at driver's ed." You have three, you have three choices how to exit Batavia. The cement is widened on both sides of the berm, which makes for easier and wider turnarounds. Backing up onto Harrison West and go east, and backing up onto Harrison West make left to go north. I've seen cars, delivery trucks, emergency vehicles, and large utility trucks use all three options. In September 2017, a neighbor's approximately 4,000-pound tree branch fell on their roof. A huge 75-ton crane came to lift it off the roof. There were absolutely no access problems in or out of Batavia. In January 2018, a different neighbor's tree branch took down several power lines. Batavia was lined with approximately 30 residents' vehicles, followed by police cars, emergency vehicles, and several DTE trucks. They all managed to maneuver down this very crowded street. Total power was back on in less than six hours, a new DTE record. Thank you for swift response by Royal Oak emergency responders and DTE. No access problems in or out of Batavia. At the Traffic Commission meeting January 23, 2018, Royal Oak policeman Lieutenant Carter was asked about emergency access in and out of diverted traffic routes and if they threatened public safety. He said not to his recollection, and he added, "New police hires are trained about berms." He also mentioned that he lives on a diverted access street. As for safety and traffic flow, when opening a berm, I believe it comes down to common sense. If someone is trying to get to 696, Lincoln, Campbell, or downtown Royal Oak by cutting through a neighborhood, they're obviously in a hurry. That means speeding and safety issues. Please don't make this neighborhood a thoroughfare by saving a few measly minutes for impatient drivers, possibly intoxicated bar patrons, and the possible easy getaway for the criminal element. Just this past August, a tire and tire rim theft ring were busted starting at Lincoln and Campbell. Luckily, the criminals didn't have complete access to 696 from our neighborhood because of the berms. The high-speed chase that clocked up to 100 miles per hour could have resulted very tragically. Criminals avoid areas that lack open entrances and exits. Berms help prevent daring getaways, especially onto high-speed expressways like 696. I want to thank the Traffic Commission for considering, understanding, and then voting unanimously to keep all berms. Keeping the berms are in agreement with the city's stand for public safety and that Royal Oak is still one of the safest cities in America. Please, together, we can keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poprovsky.
I'm Kyle Sumner at 1114 Irving Avenue. In 2014, my family moved to Royal Oak from Milford. Living close to Main Street and the hustle and bustle of downtown Royal Oak was very important to us, but we wanted a neighborhood that still felt safe and a street where my son, who is now four, who's here, could play outside and not have the danger of constant traffic. This is exactly the reason we decided to invest in our house and Irving Avenue. For us, the flow of this neighborhood and the berms to support it was a large factor in choosing to purchase our home here. These berms help keep the neighborhood quieter and safe from all of the cars and trucks that currently use the Irving bypass. While the size of our Royal Oak neighborhood is exponentially larger than we had in Milford, the quality of life provided by knowing all or most of the traffic I see in our neighborhood or my actual neighbors is comforting to someone with children, and that cannot be overstated. If updated, these berms could be even more effective at separating the noise and other distractions from the Irving bypass, as well as I-696 and the service drive. The berms add a unique character to the neighborhood that was here long before we decided to invest in this community, and I believe with some care, these berms could be updated and made to promote more beauty and character and encourage a neighborhood for other families to be happy to invest in as well. Please consider my family's request and the request of other families like mine to preserve the berms and also update them to be more sustainable and beautiful, as we believe this is best for our neighborhood and community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sumner.
Number eight. Hey, we're gonna go. This is easy. I don't have to mis-guess what people, what their shirt colors are, what their patterns are.
I asked my lovely assistant to pass out a copy of what I'm going to discuss here within three minutes and some exhibits that I'd like to direct your attention to. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission, my name is Scott Langdorff. I reside with my family at 1202 Irving. We purchased our home in 1982, and at that time, the diverters were already a fixture in the neighborhood, and the 696 project was on hold. The Irving Truck Route to the light industrial area was already in place, protecting the neighborhood from traffic, truck traffic between the freeway and the light industrial area. Downtown Royal Oak was a quiet place. In fact, my wife and I kind of joked that you could shoot a cannon down Main Street and not hit anyone. I've just heard that. Now, 36 years later, things have changed. Downtown Royal Oak has changed dramatically. It is no longer the quiet place it once was. Restaurants, bars, condos, and many other developments has transformed downtown to a happening place. Most but not all of the light industrial area has been replaced with high-density housing. The Truck Route has been decommissioned, and truck traffic has been replaced by non-truck traffic going to and from downtown. However, the existing diverter system continues to protect this, our neighborhood, that is sandwiched between the freeway exit and downtown Royal Oak. So what's going to happen in the next 36 years? I don't know what's going to happen in the next 36 years, but according to the larger-scale development projects within the city of Royal Oak, this is a report from the Royal Oak Commission Development Department Planning Division dated February 2, 2018, this month, we can take a look at the development projects that are under construction, approved, and in the approval process. This might help us calculate the potential traffic increases in the near future. There are 46 projects listed in this, on this spreadsheet, 17 under construction, 23 approved, and six in the approval process. 30 of these projects have designated some unit numbers, the number of housing units there, which gives me a number to work with. 30 projects account for 1,158 units in total, and 79, 779 of these units are in what I'm calling the downtown area. If you look at Exhibit 1, I have plotted all the projects from a bird's-eye view that are listed on this report. A closer look on Exhibit 2 is what I'm calling the downtown area, and 33 of these 46 projects are listed, or that's 72% of the development projects are close to the downtown Royal Oak area. As you can see here, it's bounded on the, on the, on the east by Campbell, and on the west, basically by Woodward Avenue, and north, just above Catalpa, Gardenia, and on the south by 696. We were informed at the Traffic Commission meeting that most traffic studies split traffic volumes coming from all four points of the compass, north, south, east, and west, at about 25% each. However, in this case, I'm assuming that drivers coming from the northeast will either take I-75 or 696. If you take a look at Exhibit 2, you'll see a map very similar to the very first one that I had, and I drew a line from basically 75 and 696 interchange, going between 75 and 696. This line represents that if you're coming from either side of that line, you're about, you're probably going to take 75 if you're coming from the north and get off at 11 Mile. So those drivers aren't going to go through our neighborhood. But the drivers that are on the east side of that line, in the northeast corner there, they're probably going to hop on the freeway, hop on 696 to get to downtown Royal Oak. And then, of course, on the south end of Royal Oak, you've got those that are, they're going to come up 75, or they're going to come up Southfield Freeway and then hop on 696 and come over. So when you look at the lines here, you see something, less than half of the drivers, based on my observations here, or what I would do as a driver coming to or from downtown Royal Oak, just under half of the traffic would come through this area. So based on that, using this, on the, in Exhibit 4 here...
Mr. Langdorff, I need you to finish up real quick.
Okay. Bottom line, I, based on these calculations assumptions, what I'm looking at to the 1,800 units that are, traffic that's come in in here, you're looking at at least a minimum another 700 units a day are drivers coming through. That's a 40% increase, almost a 40% increase. And that doesn't even begin to encompass what happens when you have a six-story hotel, five- and four-story offices, where we don't have any numbers on who's going to be employed and working there. So, thank you.
What I take, before we go to number nine, I just, and what I take away, Mr. Langdorff, is that you want to keep the berms and that lots of people are flocking to move to Royal Oak because we're an awesome city, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone here with children that, you know, has to, well, let me rephrase the question, where the kids need to go to bed here pretty soon? As a father of three, I'm a little cognizant. If you have your kids here and you want to head out tonight early, I'll call on you next. Yes, ma'am.
I have a kid.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's here.
Here tonight? Yeah.
He's a killer kid.
Yeah, come on up. Yeah.
Royal Oak City Councilors, I would like to take this opportunity to communicate my concerns about proposals for removing traffic controls on and around Mohawk. As noted in the meeting minutes for the traffic, for the Citizens Traffic Committee on January 23, 2018, a number of residents spoke in favor of keeping the road closures. The committee recommended keeping all current closures in place and estimate costs to, to the city of $0. Most citizens have expressed concerns about additional traffic. The local streets being used to bypass I-696, Woodward, and Main Street congestion, heavy trucks rumbling down our street, and so on. The new and existing families living in the area, living in the area deserve a neighborhood which doesn't become an escalate traffic free-for-all. In addition to the traffic control issue, I would like to specifically address the issue of noise pollution. Berms and walls will help reduce noise. Noise is unwanted sound. Noise pollution is a hazard to human health and hearing. Given the expansion of local city downtown areas around I-696, Mohawk, Bermuda, Lincoln Avenue, and so on, it makes sense not only to, only to keep the traffic controls already in place, but also any and all berms, walls, and noise abandonment controls to allow homeowners the peace and tranquility of a suburban lifestyle. Finally, I believe at least one component of traffic study by Flies and Van De Brick was potentially flawed. The announced brewery, market, and development project on and around Bermuda in Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge was not taken into consideration. One can imagine how much additional traffic noise this can generate and the potential for delivery trucks and passenger cars to use Mohawk as a shortcut between the new developments in Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, and Royal Oak. Please find attachments for your references in the aforementioned Citizens Traffic Committee meetings, minutes. Items 5B, pages 3 through 4, addresses the presentation of the Flies and Van De Brick traffic study, as well as the citizen's response. I've also included an article from the Crane's Detroit Business detailing the 13-acre development in Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge, which will likely impact traffic patterns and noise levels in our area. Thank you for your time. Please help us to keep our neighborhood safe and movable.
Thank you. What school do you go to?
Royal Oak Middle School.
Royal Oak Middle School. We got great schools here, too, huh? All right, we can clap. We can clap this one. Very well-articulated points.
I was going to read for my neighbor myself.
That's okay. Yeah, you can come on up, too. Yeah, you're, you're both individuals entitled to the equal amount of time, unlike at home, right?
I'm reading for Mandy Morgan, who lives next door to me, at, she's lived in that, in the home for 10 years, on Mohawk, specifically choosing that location for across the, for access to the expressway while having peace of mind that the street would not be a through, through fare. We love being across from the tennis courts, also confirming parking only on the one side of the street. On this part of the road, I have children and crazy dog. So a low-traffic volume and reduced street parking was a still and is high priority. Years ago, the police used to monitor Mohawk, those not following the rules. It was the highlight of my children's day to see the flashing lights and watch as yet another rude breaker, rule-breaker was issued a ticket, all while keeping our street safe. Not only is there not a random police presence anymore, where I am sure they can rate at least one ticket a night, through traffic has increased. I do not see the sense of removing the berms or do not enter signs at the end of Mohawk. With the new development coming just across the way on Bermuda, we are sure to see an increase in traffic. It seems that removing the berms will also be an unnecessary cost if the city is not going to potential ensure people following the rules. At least not removing the berms can give the people on the street a peace of mind that traffic will not increase to dangerous levels. This is from Mark and Mandy Morgan at 1119 Mohawk. And I just wanted to add from mine, I'm at 1201 Mohawk, that I want, not to repeat myself 40 times as everyone else, that I would like the, the signs, the do not enter signs to stay on Mohawk and the berm to stay there, the, the...
The bump out.
Thank you. And if the berms do come down, I'm thinking that the recycling plant of those trucks would be coming down Irvine to Mohawk to use that to go to 696.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go with number nine now, the organized group. Wait, one more check. Anyone else with kids here tonight?
These are already asleep.
Oh, one? You have, you have a child here?
I have school tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, well, come on up. Yeah, I guess if you're, if you have school tomorrow as well, I didn't think to ask that.
Mr. Mayor, I don't believe we got the name and address of the student who spoke just a moment ago.
You know what? I'll, for the, for, I'm a little hesitant for children under 18 to give their name and address, so if, if a young man would like to send a, a quick...
Student.
Student, okay, that'll be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner LaBassler.
Hi. My name is Megan Mueller. I live at 1311 Mohawk. I'm a senior at Royal Oak High School. I've lived on Mohawk since I was eight, and it's almost nine years to the date. So as a kid growing up on Mohawk, my friends and I always wanted to play in the street because, but we were always warned to stay out of the street because of how poorly people drive in our neighborhood. It's honestly, it's terrifying as a kid to have people speeding down your street at 40 miles an hour because they're coming off 10 Mile and they're coming off 696. So being right off 696, Mohawk and its neighboring streets, experience so, so much wear and tear, and it would be a shame to see all of the money that we put into the repair two summers ago go to waste because we allow unsafe volumes of traffic in our neighborhood. Also, the do not enter signs keep unwanted traffic off our street, and the berms keep myself and my neighbors safe. And as a high school student that works a minimum-wage job, I am extremely conscientious of what I do with my car. So given the high levels of traffic we experience, parking on the street is something I am honestly terrified to do. Luckily, my mom and I are able to fit our two cars in our driveway, but some of my other neighbors don't have that luxury. So I guess in short, preserving the berms will preserve the integrity of our neighborhood that I'm lucky enough to call home, and I urge the City Commission to vote with the interests of the citizens that the berms protect, regardless of where you live in the city. So thank you for hearing my comments, and have a good night.
Thank you very much. And hopefully you get a good night's sleep tonight before school tomorrow. If you're having any trouble, you can watch the rest of the Commission meeting. It's pretty exciting around midnight.
My name is John Duff. I live at 118 Irving Avenue in Royal Oak. I'm here tonight to support the effort to keep the traffic diverters in place, as well as their maintenance and improvement so that they will enhance and improve the lives of the citizens, both now and in the future. Throughout my career as a producer for Ford and Lincoln brands... Throughout my career as a producer for Ford and Lincoln Brands, I've been blessed with the opportunity to travel all over this country. I've seen firsthand how different communities utilize all their green space by developing bio swales, pocket parks, rain gardens, and even community vegetable gardens. As a proud resident of this community for over twenty years, I would urge the city to engage in similar forward-thinking and innovative planning that optimizes these areas for the benefit of all. These small, yet potentially very valuable little areas, present exciting ecological opportunities that should be fully utilized. Green spaces are a proven benefit to our environment in many ways. They filter pollutants and dust from the air. They provide shade and lower temperatures. They reduce erosion of soil and pollutants. They even mitigate the impact of stormwater runoff into our already overworked sewage system. They lessen noise pollution from traffic. They provide biodiversity and conservation of species. And they even present attractive borders to neighbors and visitors alike. Through our discussions with landscape architects, county extension services, and even Michigan State University, we've learned that these are real tangible and measurable benefits that will result when green spaces developed and maintained. Today, in their present conditions, the burms represent a tangible asset. However, with just a bit of thought and vision, it doesn't take much to imagine how even a minimal investment of effort and funding on the part of the neighborhoods and government can result in a maximum return if these areas are developed to their fullest potential. The science is out there and the benefit's clear. All we need to do now is make the smart and environmentally sound decisions that will allow our community to reap these many rewards today and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duff. How'd you draw number ten?
Uh, I'm actually number thirteen. But, uh, we got some in there, but, which is terrific. Mr. Mayor, City Commission members, Mike Thompson, twelve-ten Irving. We tried to break up our group into various topics, and, and I'm the closer. Thanks, Brandon, for opening up and to not repeat and to try to get through this. It's gonna be a long agenda tonight. This, this is, I just wanna walk through the, the, um, the plan that Brandon passed out. This system works great. It's, it's kind of an underrated system, we take it for granted. Dan Gotek said, "If it isn't broke, don't fix it." That was the closing remark from the Traffic Committee. It's a passive system, which is, which is interesting because it doesn't take police enforcement, that you can't physically drive through it. It doesn't have signs. So we think if it was opened up, it would have to be monitored with full-time employees. It's a green system, as John said. It's, it's paid for, originally in the, in seventy-nine, it was two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars of federal money. If you do the math on that, that's seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars today. And it's, it's a system that works pretty well. It's in great shape. The, uh, the fire hydrants, the, the storm sewers, and, and it's, it just needs a refresh. And it's also evolved. It didn't, it didn't freeze in the seventies. It's actually been evolved. It's, it's had signage upgrades. They took the Mohawk exit off of the freeway. They added the, the Mohawk diverter, and they beefed up the signage. So we're looking for future evolution because the, the neighborhood continues to evolve as well. So we're looking to beef it up even more with Scott's traffic counts and doing all the research with the future developments that a lot, a lot of you people are responsible for. You've fostered and promoted the city, and we got a terrific place. People wanna, to work, live, be entertained, et cetera. So it's a victim of our own success in a way that we've gotta really carefully funnel and protect the single-family residents. So the, the diagram is, uh, sorry, folks, I can't show it from there, but the Irving, the Irving bypass, originally it was a truck path, but now it's vehicular traffic. It's, uh, a hundred-and-fifty thousand vehicles per day is the, uh, is the average on six ninety-six east and west in twenty-four hours. So three thousand are monitored from SEMCOG that get off the exit, the main exit, that going west. And then according to Fleas and Vanderbrink, they count at six-hundred-and-eighty to eighteen-hundred that traverse the, uh, the Irving bypass, as we call it. So it's, 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 uh, insulated the single-family residents by six diverters, also known as burms, with traffic control. We think they're doing a great job, that they need to be refreshed. There's a lot of investment could happen. There's a lot of possibilities to do that as well. And they're all important, they're all equally important. You might hear that some of them aren't so important, such as Harrison. But Harrison, if, if we lost one, it'd be a gap with, uh, someone made the analogy to water, that it's gonna go right through there. We forecast if, if we lost one, it would, uh, end up, uh, going back to Mohawk and getting back to the bridge and cutting through the neighborhood. So east, west, north, south are equally important. The other thing that's interesting is, uh, this is a land use plan from the Planning Department, and it's, it's a, it's a wonderful split. It's a feeder that's, uh, coincidentally in the right place, that it, it feeds the mixed-use and the, and the high-density housing. And then on the other side of the, of the path, of the route, it's single-family. So it, it organizes and feeds and doesn't, you don't have to traverse either neighborhood in order to get through here. So it works very well. It's kind of underrated, and it, it needs to be enhanced and beefed up. So speaking of that, what we'd like to do is go into a joint venture as a neighborhood association. We'd like to, to work with your in-house DPS arborists. We'd like to, um, figure out how we can identify each of the six diverters. We'd like to help our folks on Longfellow. Victoria was talking about, um, the Longfellow traffic, and we'd, we'd like to get a study or a, um, an idea how we could narrow that to make it impossible for trucks to turn in and out of Longfellow to get those numbers down to where they're acceptable as well. And we'd like to, the city, to figure out if, if, if we're, if we're, if you're good enough tonight to, to say, "Let's keep them attacked," how can we go forward? How can we repair them? At what cost? Are the, are the funds available? What can the neighborhood do? Can we sign a maintenance agreement? Can we possibly, uh, try to get some funding ourselves for trees and that? So with that, uh, my last line is, uh, "The quality of life in our neighborhood should not be sacrificed for traffic convenience." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Okay. Do we have anyone else here tonight to speak about burms that lives in the affected area? I see a, is that state representative, but tonight here at mayor, former mayor Ellison?
I'm here as Jim Ellison, resident of the neighborhood, and not here as former mayor. I'm not here as state representative. I'm here to represent myself and my family.
Very good.
The opening comment is, "I don't want the burms out." I think it'd be silly to take all the burms out. It doesn't make any sense. It would be an expense you don't need. And someone said it's, it's, it's not broken. It's, it's working fine. But I do have one thing that I would like you to consider. Those of us that live in the neighborhood, um, have been divided, east and west. We lost a lot of industrial to the west of us, and that's now turned into residential. Multi-family, yes, but still residential. And those people are part of our neighborhood, and, and we have no neighborhood connectivity with those people that are moving into our neighborhood. And as someone who's lived in the neighborhood for twenty-one years, it's always been, and I'll say an inconvenience, not major, but an inconvenience, that when we wanna get out to any businesses on Main Street, we've gotta go either to the Service Drive and, and go up that way, or go out to Irving and follow that, or we've gotta go out to Lincoln and follow that. The request I put in front of you, it's a simple request, is that you consider opening up the Harrison berm. That is...
Ladies and gentlemen, you all have a turn, or you will have a turn. Please don't interrupt any of the speakers, okay? You're out of order when you do that. Continue, Mr. Ellison.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, it, it, it's one of the problems we got here, is you come up and speak in, in, in contrary to what the mass behind me is speaking. Yeah, you're gonna draw your arrows, and, and, and I expected it. Again, it's the smallest of the burms. It's the, uh, one that has the least amount of single-family residential around it. Uh, it, uh, would, would allow east-west traffic to flow on Harrison with the light at Main Street all the way back into our neighborhood. Um, I ask you to, to request it. I mean, I requested that you consider it as, as an option to open up the neighborhood so that it can flow a little bit better, so that those of us that, that aren't in agreement with, with a lot of the hyperbole I've heard tonight, that it would give us an opportunity to actually enjoy our neighborhood a little bit better. That being said, if you do nothing, if you leave the burms in, if you don't take the sides down, I'm not moving. I'm not going anywhere. I love my neighborhood, and I support my neighbors. But I live by the credo that if I don't speak now, I've gotta forever hold my peace. This is the opportunity to make the request. I make the request. I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellison. All right. Anybody else who wants to speak of burms that lives on, in the neighborhood? I see a gentleman here in the right, sure. Yes, sir.
Good evening, uh, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Andrew Kalanowski. I just moved to one-zero-zero-eight Batavia in August of the year. I am smack dead center in ground zero of Batavia, Harrison, and Hudson. And I feel there's a lot of really good points. And I wanna thank everyone who responded to my emails. That was very nice of you. I know time's important, hence I got less than five minutes. I'll make it brief. I feel what the big issue that we are all missing is why the burms were put in place is because of trucks. Let's look at our highways. Why do we have areas where trucks have to count their weight? Because trucks count for ninety-seven percent of all road damage. So we wanna remove the burms. We wanna remove Harrison. We just wanna remove one berm. So it costs two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, it costs no dollars. Well, where are the hidden costs of ten years when trucks are running down that road, creating potholes, creating destruction on the road? Drunk drivers driving on roads. Heaven forbid a kid gets hit by a car, hits by a truck. What we're creating is a system for people to get to downtown easier when there's already a system established. My car has four bent rims because of potholes in Michigan. The potholes are caused by trucks that weigh nineteen tons. My neighborhood was established, I think in the early nineteen hundreds. My house is nineteen-twenty, nineteen-twenty-two. Trucks weighing that much weren't even developed by then. They had to use rail. If you open this up, it's not to Holiday Market, it's not to make it more convenient. I question why you wanna open it up. All I see is trucks. And the study was seven to nine, four to six. I'm an industrial sales rep. I put loaded pallets on trucks weighing nineteen tons. They run from ten to three because the guys wanna go home. And the people pulling the late night are only going on six ninety-six. I really want you guys to consider how much money you want to save up when you remove the burms. Twenty thousand a year, thirty thousand, forty thousand. Let's be responsible. We're all elected officials. We're all Americans. We're all Royal Oak citizens. We all want the best. And I just think that keeping every single berm, every traffic mitigation will not only help, but enhance the safety of this neighborhood. I wanna thank you guys for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, same thing. I wanna make sure that anyone's here who's, wants to speak on an agenda item tonight gets a chance to speak, because I know... Well, we're done with agenda items. If you're here to speak on an agenda item, if you live, uh, I think, Mr. Schneider?
I just wanna speak on the burms?
Yeah. Please approach. You're out of order, sir. Please be respectful. Sir, 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 it is public comment. Sir, you're out of order.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm gonna yield the floor for this gentleman to come up and speak.
You're here to talk about the burms.
Okay. My name is Alex Schneider. I'm, uh, live at ten-eleven Knowles, resident of Royal Oak for twenty years. I'm here to support these diverters slash berm system as is, as it stands now. And here's why. If we mess with this, we touch one, we're gonna create another problem. Problem that will be very difficult to correct in the future. Do I have evidence of that? Yes. You were here, Mr. Mayor, when the City Commission was presented with this statement, a request to put a truck route on Knowles. That was a no-truck street. And the trucks were supposed to enter from Main Street, going east on East Hudson, turn south on Knowles, and, uh, turn, um, turn, uh, west on East Harrison, and enter the facility, and then get out through Hudson gates back to Main Street. Nothing like this happened. We were told that it's gonna be wonderful. Nothing like this happened. Trucks are all over the place, coming and going from every direction. Trucks, semi-trucks, I should state, are entering do-not-enter streets on a regular basis. Four years ago, a truck route was established, signs were, were put up, "Do not enter trucks." And what do we see? And I have some sampling here, pictures. You can see a truck coming through the Irving Truck Route. In this picture, I have more of these pictures. This is just a sampling. There's no way to stop them. I spoke with city manager, Johnson. I spoke with police chief, Adonahue, deputy police chief, Fraser, and lieutenant Carter. And so far, I don't see any changes. Trucks are regularly parking on the street in no parking, no standing, no stopping zone. Here's some pictures here for you. This is not supposed to be happening. This is, wasn't supposed to be happening. I'm gonna submit some pictures here. Even a truck driver missing left a truck at the intersection, happens on a regular basis. Truck drivers behave extremely badly. What do they do? Somebody wants to use the bathroom, broad daylight. They stop the truck, no stopping, no standing, no parking, doesn't matter. They go into lunch, they come back from lunch, they need to use the bathroom. And they get between the tractor and the trailer, and they urinate on the street. Here's a picture, just a sampling here for you.
Before I look at that, Mr. Schneider, is that a picture of somebody urinating on a street? Because I'll take your word for it if it is.
You don't see all the minute details? Let's put it this way.
I'm gonna refrain from making any more jokes.
Okay. So I submit to you, since we have no enforcement, and you open one of the burms, whether it's north and south, east-west, whether it's East Harrison, East Hudson, or any, any other ones, the trucks will go through, and they will go to Mohawk on the way to the freeway. A lot of times, what's happening here is the railroad crossings are backed up. The train stops. Trucks immediately starting to go in a direction they're not supposed to be going to. So this is what's gonna happen if you open up the burms. And I strongly suggest that the City Commission sustain this berm system, diverter system, as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. So just a reminder, everyone, we had an outburst there. And, uh, you know, this isn't our meeting up here. This is the public's meeting. You know, by covenant, it's all of us here having our city meeting. And as the chair, I'm putting a priority tonight on those who are coming out to speak on the public agenda items. We have a lot of people that are here to speak on the agenda items, and so that's what I'm prioritizing tonight. So is there anyone here that wants to speak on the burms this evening that lives in the area first, and then we'll get who doesn't live in the area? I see a hand back there. Yes, that, Ms. Goodwin?
We just have some visuals.
Some?
Well, there's a history, so I wanted to place some for your...
Look like original copies.
Don't worry, I'm gonna be brief.
Some handouts of some historical, um, traffic council, I have charts for each of you. Thank you.
Very much. I just, I first wanna thank the Traffic Committee, um, the City Engineering Department, I don't see Matt here, and the residents who came to the, um, very well-publicized in advance January twenty-third public hearing about this issue. The city did a great job, and I'm here to support the unanimous... The city did a great job, and I'm here to support the unanimous vote of the traffic committee to keep all traffic mitigation in the South End neighborhood in question. As long as we have a freeway exit depositing into a residential neighborhood, signs, partial and full traffic diverters, also known as bump outs and burms, are needed. Having been repeatedly involved in traffic issues since moving to Mohawk in 2001, I will state once again that Mohawk is truly a unique situation as a residential freeway exit, and without current traffic mitigation measures, would return to its former state with unsafe traffic volumes and other related issues. While Mohawk was not included as part of the F&amp;V study, as quote, "The city believes the partial closure is performing as designed and shall remain." I have since the traffic committee meeting been informed that there are forces working to remove the Harrison berm and the Mohawk windup timed signs. And this was not brought before the traffic committee on January 23rd. The boards before you depict only some of the articles that document a multi-year and very long tedious process many of us participated in to gain the timed signs on Mohawk and windup and the bump out on Mohawk. As some of you know, and I've given you the charts to provide you the city traffic counts, Mohawk had a very high volume of traffic, as high as 1,923 cars per day, prior to the timed signs and bump out being installed. Not only did we have four times the traffic of Longfellow to our west, we had two times the traffic of windup to our east, and we had 800 more cars than the former Irving Truck Route at that time. Streets such as Irving and Batavia, who you've heard from tonight, were not part of that traffic count because rightfully, they had already been protected with federally funded burms. Contrary to what some may say, the timed signs facing those entering from the freeway were installed after Franklin School closed in 2003, and were in no way related to school traffic, which typically came from Lincoln, Hudson and Harrison. The timed signs have reduced our traffic volume, and the bump out has alerted drivers to slow down as they enter our neighborhood. They are interdependent upon each other. Subsequent traffic studies in 2005 placed all similarly situated streets such as Mohawk, Longfellow and Windot in acceptable local levels of traffic volume at about 600 cars per day. In 2009, Longfellow proved to be even lower at 542 cars per day. And I want to say one word about convenience. We live in the most conveniently located neighborhood in Royal Oak, if not the entire metro Detroit area. Every resident in this affected area can get to I-696, Woodward Avenue, Main Street, I-75 within minutes of leaving their house with the current traffic mitigation. Removal of the Harrison berm will increase industrial traffic and other traffic from the west seeking access to I-696. And I think, as you heard earlier, will most assuredly hurt Longfellow and Mohawk the most because those trucks are going to head south to, you know, get out to 696. So I don't think that's a good use of city resources to remove that berm. And I don't think further traffic studies on an area that has been incessantly studied for many, many years is a good use of city resources. You have bigger problems to solve. This problem is solved. Please do not break what is fixed. Keep all traffic mitigation in the South End neighborhood. Our neighborhood has improved immensely because of it. Removal of any of these devices would be a regressive move that would harm the neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Anybody left that wants to speak about the burms, our neighbors that are impacted by it? Yes, sir. In the back, I think. Flannel?
Hello, everybody. I'm Pete Wordock. I live at 4114 Edgar. Real brief history. My dad bought our first house on 821 Mohawk for $14,000 from the shoe cobbler back in 1954. We all grew up in that neighborhood, went to Franklin. And I remember in fourth grade, a kid telling me, "We have to move because they're putting in a freeway." And back then, you're like, "What are you talking about?" But freeway, you know, it came in. It was east meets west. It was great. It has been tremendous for not only our community, but the whole east-west thoroughfare. We've hit a few bumps. This is another one. I think it's just a bump. I don't think this is a real, uh, major issue. I have a letter from a friend of mine who actually lives in my boyhood home at 821 Mohawk. Her name is Marianne Brown. I'll read her letter briefly. She regrets she's not able to speak in person tonight. Her name is Marianne Brown, residing in 821 Mohawk for the last 30 years. Historically, over the last 18 years, I, along with many residents, attended countless traffic committee meetings, commission meetings, addressing the never-ending saga of traffic mitigation in the South End of the city. It's been a real education of traffic studies, vehicle counts, signage, road classifications, professional study, presentations, legal opinions, petitions, public hearings, city commission resolutions, dealings with the TIA, MDOT, 696 exit signs, I-75 widening, et cetera. It's astonishing how much scrutiny this section of town has endured over the years. It has long been a painful process for many residents. Your decision this evening whether to keep or remove the six burms will hopefully bring conclusion to this constant revisiting of this often divisive issue. Although encouraged by the findings of, that Mohawk has been excluded from the study, I remain concerned not only for my street, but for the neighbors at various protected locations. Having been exhaustingly involved with traffic mitigation since 2001, I can factually state that Mohawk is truly a unique traffic convergence point due to expressway and related traffic. Without the current mitigation measures, Mohawk would again be fraught with the problems well beyond just the traffic volume. As long as 696 is an expressway, Mohawk will continue to be an expressway traffic mitigation measure. Regarding the removal of the six burms in our area, residents from those streets may be in the best position to address their specific issues. However, I would like to make comment that sole, that a sole truck route still exists in our area, and removal of any burms could potentially have a negative impact on the entire neighborhood, not just the street or streets subject to the berm removal. The installed traffic calming devices currently in place are functioning properly. This mitigate, these mitigation measures are independent with each other. They provide the traveling public and the ability to get back and forth while significantly reducing the cut-through traffic. The most impacted streets have seen the traffic counts remain or return to acceptable residential range. Again, these traffic mitigation issues and measures are independent, interdependent, rather, and need to be retained for the continued health and safety. I respectfully ask that you keep all traffic mitigation in place. Thank you.
Mr. Wordock, appreciate it. All right. I see a hand back there.
Hello. My name's John Bennett. I'm at 1327 Mohawk. And I'm going to try to cut it a little short. I have a long list of things that I'm sure you guys have heard repeatedly. I've been sitting here with you for a few hours now as well. So try to keep it short for you. Earlier in the beginning of the meeting, Semcog spoke about bike lanes that were being put in in the area. And it's a point that I don't think any of my neighbors have brought up. I feel like if we remove some of the diverters, do not enter signs, burms, whatever you want to call it, it will cut down on the ability of our neighborhood to be bikable as well, not just walkable. I'm afraid that having Harrison traffic go through in the event that, say, as one previous speaker said, a train were to come through, the trucks were rather than to go out to Main or Lincoln and hit that traffic, that they might turn around. And, you know, just anything cutting down on bikability and walkability is not something that I think that we as a progressive city want to see. As for the comments about the connected neighborhood east-west, as much as I can appreciate the concern about not being able to drive east-west on One Street, Harrison, or Hudson, or any of those other ones, we have, we have Main Street right down the road, and you can get on it through Lincoln, through 10 Mile. I don't think it's too much of an inconvenience. And the burms as they are, it doesn't impact people who want to walk through the neighborhood. It's totally fine to do so still. And in the event you're not able to walk, it's just a short drive away. I caution to say to remove it just to cut out a few seconds. One thing, another thing I heard mentioned during the traffic committee meeting was the funding related to removing of the burms. I'm not sure how true was. I'm not an expert in funding. It's, you guys do a good job with that. They mentioned something along the lines of special assessments to people who live alongside the burms. I'm, again, not 100% sure how that works. But I feel like if we're going to have any special assessments in the neighborhood, that'd be better suited to improving the neighborhood to meet the people who live there's desire. So, you know, added things to the parks, more trees in the neighborhood, things along those lines. Not removing a berm system that everyone appreciates who's there. So whether or not that's true, if there's any special assessment built in along with the city funds, I think we should just take that into account as well. And then anything that's not funded by citizens, like through a special assessment, city money, there's more than enough bad roads. I mean, in the recent weeks, I've been down Delamere over by Meyer. Kind of a beat-up road. Sixth Street west of Washington. It's kind of beat up over there as well. I think we're going to use road funding, which my understanding of the funding is that this funding for the berm removals can only be used for roads. It can't be for planting trees or doing things along that line. Spend the money in other neighborhoods who want to see that money spent in their neighborhood, not in our neighborhood where we don't want you to spend any money. Leave our neighborhood alone. We're good. So those are things that, you know, I just think, take that in mind. And then last but not least, I worry that if traffic was to be changed and, you know, there was a perceived market value drop in the area, people who are buying homes aren't going to spend as much money if there's a, you know, perceived truck route going through. Whether or not it's the case, perception is reality. Location, location, location. If our values go down, not only we're going to be not so happy, cities not going to see as much tax money when someone else moves in at a house that sells for less than what it could. So, you know, besides all the other issues that I, you know, echo with my fellow residents, you know, just keep the money in mind too, please. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Dave Robbins. I live at 1037 Irving, right along the, on Harrison, where we've been proposing to remove one of the burms. My wife and my family, we've been living in Royal Oak since 1990 at that same location. We chose that location because it is sequestered. It is a nice area for families because there is low traffic. We are on our third wave of families coming to the neighborhood. If we have a straight pass-through on Harrison to downtown, that's going to attract the bar traffic, arts, beats and eats, festival goers, and other people traipsing through there that's going to endanger families. Now, we opened the meeting tonight. We talked about safety. And I think that area there, because of the limited access, is a safe area. What we'd hate to see is easy access allowing people to come in and out and an increase of crime and be able to get to 696 more easily. And speaking of safety and resources, I think the attention that we would spend on this and the money for the reconstruction, we have many other areas in Royal Oak where we should be focusing on. The northwest corner of Lincoln and Washington has not had a pedestrian signal for nine to eight months. And I don't know how much those cost, but that's going to be much less than the money that we're spending on these studies, and we need to focus our efforts on that. In terms of convenience, Lincoln is fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Any other neighbors? Anybody else that wants to speak on the burms? I saw a hand go up back there real quick. Is that, I can't tell if that's Mr. Karloski or not. All right, now he's walking into the light. Could be his halo. Maybe not.
Rick Karloski, 419 Virginia. I am not a resident of the neighborhood, but I am a member of the traffic committee. And there's a couple of things I would like to say when we made our, our decision, at least that I considered. First of all, we are also planning road diets on Campbell and Washington. If the, and even according to your, our city engineer, that road diet most likely will reduce traffic on Campbell going north at peak hours because it's just going to be a little bit congested. If you start getting these congestions, that traffic's going to have to go someplace. If Main Street, at the Main Street exits, even if you are coming from west, you can come down to the Mohawk Bermuda exit, and you now have a east-west thoroughfare through the neighborhood. Any app is going to tell you how to get there. So the burms are not an individual thing where you, if you remove one, it's okay, as has been previously mentioned. They are, they are a system. If you open up one, you're going to open up the neighborhood. It's just, it's just that simple. So primarily, I think this, this traffic, secondly, the traffic study was done on a neighborhood with burms. So the traffic study is basically telling you, yes, the burms are working because they're keeping the traffic in the neighborhoods down. You mean, you have to go back to where you didn't have the burms to see what, you know, what kind of effect that may or may not have, based on the fact that you can now, you know, travel through the, through the neighborhood to get to, to Main Street or primarily Main Street. Secondly, you're already getting more office buildings, so you're going to get, you're going to get more traffic. And as you're putting in road diets, the traffic has got to go someplace, and people are not going to wait 20 minutes at an intersection down on that hideously designed exit on Main Street and 696. They're going to go through, they're going to go through the neighborhood. So that's primarily why I voted to keep all the burms there. And lastly, I think the study was premature because, again, if you're going to do all this, if you're going to have all this stuff coming into the downtown, if you're going to have road diets, what's the hurry? Let's wait a couple, three years, see how this stuff works out, and then you can come back and look at the burms again if you want. But right now, doing traffic studies and making changes to the current traffic flow when we don't know how all this is going to interact later is a bit premature in my, in my estimation at best. And as people have said, it seems to be working fine. The neighborhood, for the most part, does not seem to be upset about having to go up to Lincoln to go, go east or west. Why, why mess with it? And if I could make one other comment, since it's just divert from burms for a minute. I really, I think the Normandy Oaks plan looks pretty good. I'm very impressed by the fact it has growth built into it. So if we get more funds, you can already see where you're going. So when you discuss that one, I think it's a, it's a, a good plan for the money we have, and it is a good plan going forward when we get additional monies to where, where stuff is going to go. And it's not going to be, we're not going to be arguing this over and over and over again, I hope anyway, as to what's going to be next and where is it, where it's going to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karloski. Yes, ma'am. I just want to make sure everyone that came out to speak about the agenda item tonight got a chance because... Yes, sir. Yes. Normally, when we don't have so many public comments, we can go around the room. But, you know, folks have kids at home, want to get home, and their issue is very important to them since it's impacting your neighborhood. I want to make sure you don't leave before you get a chance to speak.
Thanks. My name is Chris. I live at 1327 Mohawk. I'm going to keep it short and sweet because I know you guys have heard a lot. But I echo everything that was said earlier about keeping the burms. I do think, I am a little concerned about removing the Harrison berm just because it is an east-west access. But our street is unique in that it's the only one that's open to the service drive. So all of the freeway-bound traffic would need to travel east-west at one point. That's kind of why the Irving route does all those zigzags. And I just worry that drivers will not want to do the zigzags, and they'll see that our route is the new shortcut. I'm also concerned about the Waze app and the other Google apps that were mentioned earlier. Not sure how we're going to enforce those apps. I know that if you want some information about other cities that have had those issues, Google Leonia, New Jersey. But again, just going to keep it short and sweet. I agree with all of my neighbors and everything that was said earlier.
Thanks, Chris. Chris, do you mind giving us your last name if you don't?
Gervais.
Gervais. Thank you, Chris. Gervais. All right. Yes, now we will, how many people are here for Normandy? Just real quick. Okay, there's a handful. We'll start mixing it up a little bit if the people with Normandy are okay with that. All right, is that Mr.? Mr. Rapinski, why don't you kick off Normandy here? Sir, you're out of order. We talked about the process of our community meeting. Please be respectful of everyone here, and we'll be respectful of you when you have your time to speak.
Mike Rapinski, 3152 Parker. Couple of things. I'm going to keep mine short and sweet too. Just before I talk about Normandy Oaks, I just want to acknowledge two people in our city, people that I've worked with for the last eight, 10, 12 years or more. First of all, Todd Menick, who was termed out as the chair of the Parks and Rec and Senior Advisory Board. Todd gave many, many years to this city in a volunteer capacity. And Todd is now, I guess... guess retired from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and I just want to acknowledge him for all his years of service, as well as Todd Gazetti, our outgoing Parks and Rec Supervisor for the City of Royal Oak. Todd has worked for the city for, I think, 140 years, something like that. But we're going to miss them both in our city. Very valuable people, both an employee and a volunteer. Second thing I want to talk about is the Normandy Oaks Plan you have. We spent a lot of time on this over the last, starting about four years ago when the task force was still formed. We've had, you know, meetings, and we've had public engagement and surveys, and more surveys, and more public comment. And we got to the point where we are here tonight, we have a recommended master plan that, as part of the task force, including Mayor Pro Tem Douglas, Commissioner Macy, and Commissioner Gibbs, who were invaluable in their participation in that group, as well as Jill Robinson, the other member of the task force. And we unanimously, unanimously recommended the overall plan and the Phase One Plan that you have with you tonight. And I think it was mentioned at our last meeting when we did this recommendation, that this is a living, breathing document. This is a plan that can be massaged and can be tweaked as we go forward. But Phase One is our starting off point. I think it's a really good plan. It really hits a lot of the buttons that have been mentioned over the last couple of years, and I think has a little something for everyone. Not as much as we would have liked to have had, but the, the overall master plan allows for that when funding is available, whether that be block grants, or crowdfunding, or corporate sponsorships. We need to pursue all of that. Lastly, one other thing that's on the agenda tonight I want to mention, and that is the extension of the golf course operator's contract, our vendor. We've unanimously at the Parks and Rec Board voted in favor of extending that contract. It was properly vetted. These folks have done a tremendous job for us at the golf course. They took over 10 years ago when that golf course was imploding, and it was in really rough shape. They came in, stepped in, met all of our requirements. They, it was, it was bleeding money, and now we are receiving money from that contract. It is, they have just simply done a great job. We hope that they can continue to go forward. They've invested into the golf course already and plan to do more investment going forward, so make sure that we continue that contract. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Rapinski, for chairing the Normandy Oaks Task Force for all these years, balancing the myriad of desires and infinite constellations and thousands of pieces of input. You did a good job. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Norma Reganold, and I live at 2603 Bensetta Boulevard, and I have lived there for 33 years. And I'm here to ask the commission, especially the mayor, to contact the neighboring cities so that we can have a march where people will carry signs saying, "We want a law to be passed to ban assault weapons." Assault weapons, military attack weapons, do not belong in the United States of America. I do understand that I'm asking you for a very big project, which will take a lot of time. I feel really, I cannot do that, but I certainly will help in every way I can. I do understand that March 14th, the middle school, the, at 10:00 a.m., the students will walk out for 17 minutes in memory of those who were killed at Florida High School. I certainly will be there. There's another march on March 24th, but that will be in Washington, and I don't know if I can make that. But I do ask you to please consider this. This is a peaceful country. We should not have military attack weapons here. And if you do, put together a march. And as I said, this would be neighboring, neighboring cities. We need millions of people. We cannot do this by ourselves. We must pressure our local governments, our state governments, and our federal government to pass this law. I know that suggestions have been made. To me, they are all appeasements. They do not come to the crooks of the matter, which is to ban assault weapons. If by chance you are able to put together this march, I would be glad, very glad, to call many, many churches in the neighboring cities and ask them to join our march and to run it in their Sunday bulletins and encourage their members to march with us. I thank you very much for considering this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reganold. And I'm just going to add, I know, I'm going to break my own rule here, just to let you know, please contact me personally. There are some folks in the community that are organizing, that have reached out to me, some of the march activities potentially, so we can put it in contact, put you in contact with those people to, you know, figure out, you know, what exactly is going to transpire. I also want to bring to your attention that I hope that tonight, I've asked the commission, I prepared a resolution for this evening in support of the March for Our Lives. And it took me a while to write it, I didn't get it out today, you guys should have copies of it. Oh, Melanie has copies. So if you stay, stay tuned, and, you know, our agenda, if our fellow commissioners happen to put this resolution I've authored on the agenda, hopefully it'll give you some consolation that this commission does seriously share your concerns.
All right, and I, I did, Judy Davids does have my phone number and have my email address. So, and how would I get in touch with you?
You can contact Judy Davids, and she'll get you. She's, she knows where I'm at 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
All right, thank you.
I see, is a gentleman there in the plaid?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm Rudy Davis. I am the Government and Legislative Member for Royal Oak Manor, otherwise the Pepto-Bismol Building down the street, as everybody calls it, which will be changing shortly. Two things, well, I have several things, but one thing I would like to...
Sir, I'm so sorry, can we get your name real quick?
Alan Ashley, I live at Royal Oak Manor.
Perfect. You got your position and your name now.
I am Government and Legislative Chairman for Royal Oak Manor.
Perfect.
Last week, you authorized a task force on seniors, and you were going to have five members. I request that you add three more permanent members, one from Barton Towers, Royal Oak Manor, and the Village. These three members will give you a different aspect of the needs, because we are all residents for seniors, but we all have different needs, and that will add more depth and perspective to that committee along with the appointed people from the City of Royal Oak. I think that was an oversight, but I would like you to consider that as adding to that committee, three permanent people not appointed by the mayor or the commission. The second one is, I would like to see a rollback of the parking passes, because I, we live across the street from the very large where you hold arts, beats and eats, the pig roast, and now the flower. We have 30 members that park over there. I am one of them. Right now, it costs us, for 30 passes at $25, for a year, $9,000. When you raise it to 45, it's going to $16,200. We can no longer afford that. What we're going to do is force it onto our individual members. That will mean they will be paying $540 a year for parking passes. That goes down to, that, that is 500, that is 500. So you're taking $45. That could be a doctor's appointment, a prescription. That could be shopping for groceries. That is what's taken out of our social security checks, and we live on those. As people come and go, we will get more members. The possibility of having more than 30 is grateful, is, is very great. We need that to be rolled back to $25. We also heard that we could buy extra passes at the $25 rate before March 1st. We had a couple of members go down there, and they were refused, we had bought for March and April, we wanted to buy for May. We were told we could not do that. But yet, on the desk, it said that we could bypasses up till March 1st, when the rate goes up to $45. I hope that you will consider the seniors that park across there. There's 30 of us, could be more in the next couple of weeks, who knows? But $16,200, that's a house or a car that you're asking the Royal Oak Manor to shelve out for these seniors. The other thing that we would like to see is a signal such as the one you have on 11 Mile across from the library, put at Sixth Street and Main, because I hate playing froggy going across Main Street, even when you have the little yellow signs out there, "Please stop." I was hit, almost hit, four times even with those signs out. People coming south on Main Street, soon as they see Buffalo Wild Wings, they step on the gas and they go through. Last year, last year, a lady in her, and was pushing a baby carriage and holding hands to another child, a car missed them by six inches. And there are no cops out there. If we had a signal that flashes pedestrians like you do across from the library, you might save a life of a child, or a parent, or a senior trying to cross the street to go to the parking lot over there without dodging cars. These are serious conditions that is the welfare. The next thing I will, well, I can't talk about it, but I will be emailing you about forcing us to move when you have the large events. We are forced to park between Troy and Knowles. We have no parking around it because it goes to vendors. Some of the items found after vendors leave, used condoms, beer bottles, you name it, vomit, urination on our property. City doesn't clean it up. We have to. It is time to let us have it. And that means when, when the vendors have it, families cannot be parked there to see their grandparents or parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. See a hand in the middle here? Is that Ms. Hennessy?
Good evening. Carol Hennessy, 258 East 12 Mile Road, Royal Oak. I'm here to ask to have the blue piece of art removed from the Veterans Memorial Plaza. I have been asking for a few months now with no action. I have some petitions from our Royal Oak citizens, members of the VFW, American Legion, Eagles, and Canadian Legion, all asking for removal of the art. I will give this to Melanie. As I have said in the past, it is not that we don't want art on the dedicated land where the Veterans Memorial Site sits. It is that the veterans and others would like art that relates to veterans. I would appreciate it if it would be brought up tonight. The veterans feel that this is disrespectful to them, and especially to those who gave their life for us. When we moved this monument to this spot, it was part of the master plan and a great spot for the community to visit. We made sure that all the memorials in Royal Oak were at this site. We also made sure that if we needed to add more memorials, we would have room on the east side of the monuments. That's why that whole east side is open. Hopefully, we will never have to do this. Many families walk out of the library, and their children ask what that is, and the families will take the children over to the monument and explain to them about our wars. It is a perfect place for a monument and for our youth to learn about our freedom. At times, you can go there and you'll find notes, you'll find flowers, or just a single rose saying, "Grandpa, I love you, I miss you," things like that, just indicating what a perfect spot this is for that monument. And some of the veterans had to leave already, and I apologize for John. He has a sick wife at home, and he's very upset about the piece of art on the veterans' dedicated land, and so I think between his wife and, and the subject, it just got to him, and I know he'll probably apologize at another time. So I am asking for veterans and citizens of Royal Oak to please remove the art or replace it with something related to veterans. I would like to read an email I received from John Williams. "My name is John Williams, U.S. Navy, 1958 to 1964. I am a member of the American Legions in Royal Oak, the Disabled American Veterans of South Oakland County, and the Metropolitan Detroit Veterans Coalition. I have participated as a proud veteran in numerous events in Royal Oak to show my patriotism and respect for the City of Royal Oak. I cannot support the piece of art being displayed on the designated grounds of the Royal Oak War Memorial. It shows nothing as a meaning for being there. Please move it to another place. There isn't another like it on the northwest corner of 11 Mile and Main Street. In that area of restaurants, it has been mistaken for an advertisement for a donut shop." So, we didn't understand what it was either, but anyway, we just hope you will take it under advisement. And on another subject, the berms, I have to agree with everyone that's spoken. I believe it'll be a safer and a better neighborhood with keeping the berms up. And then about Normandy Oaks Task Force, I thank them for all their work that they did. I was there at the last couple of meetings, and I like the new plan, and glad that there's going to be room for improvement and adding on, and hope it gets through. Thank you.
Ms. Hennessy? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Barbara Voselenech, 3024, Murray Avenue, Royal Oak. I'm going to send my phone around because I didn't get a chance to get this picture printed, but I want you to take a look at this picture. May I? Mayor?
Yeah, I suppose we can do that if you trust us with your phone.
Sure.
I've been known to make crazy text messages with other people's phones, but...
That's okay, nobody will mind.
If Mr. Dubuck were here, he'd say, "Don't do it."
I come to you in regards to a situation. I am a law-abiding citizen for the City of Royal Oak for over 40 years. I won't really tell you how many years, but it's over 40. I'm a graduate of the City of Royal Oak. I lived in Roy, Royal Oak, was born and raised in Royal Oak, and I raised my children in Royal Oak. I love Royal Oak. Royal Oak is my home. Royal Oak has really made me want to not be a law-abiding citizen. I wrote a letter to Mr. Johnson with a copy of it to Mayor Fornier in regards to me bringing in a hot tub into my backyard. I paid hundreds of dollars to have it moved after I received the building permit from Kelly in the Building Department. When I approached Kelly in the Building Department, I told Kelly that, you know, I was bringing this in, I had gotten it from a very dear friend of mine who's very ill, and I was bringing it in and wanted to make sure I was putting it in the right place. I, you know, I'm paying a lot of money to have it moved, I want it in the right place. I had photographs I brought in. They told me I needed to draw a schematic. I said, "Look, I can barely make stick people." I said, "I'll do the best I can." I brought in a picture of Google Earth. I brought in the photograph that you're seeing as it goes, oh, as it's already gone past you. You can see where the newspaper is, is where the hot tub was supposed to be. Kelly approved it right on the spot, told me, "Wow, you're really on the ball. You've got all your ducks in a row. Sure, I'll issue it to you right away." So she did. I went downstairs, I paid the $100, I paid the $1.95 fee to use my debit card, came back upstairs with my receipt, she handed me my debit, or my building permit, and boy, right in the front window it went. I was going to be the proud owner of a hot tub, till the electrician showed up. the proud owner of a hot tub, till the electrician showed up. When the electrician showed up, they said, "You can't put that there." "Why not?" "The Building Department told me I can." "Well, they don't know anything about electricity." I'm like, "Well, I don't either." So, "It's a hot tub, I need electricity." So it ended up being that I had to call down and I talked to Kelly again in the Building Department, the inspector, and I told her that I couldn't leave it there. "Why not?" And I said, "Well, because the electrical people say I can't." And so, she says, "Oh, I'm sorry, I made a mistake." Well, that mistake cost me a hundred dollars. I then ended up having to get a bunch of people that I had to pay to come out and move my hot tub. So the electrician, who by the way, I did pay for a permit, pulled by the company that, uh, did the electricity for my hot tub, and, um, my hot tub's up and running. I love it. But I don't like the fact that I had all my ducks in a row, according to Kelly, paid the hundred dollars as a law-abiding citizen, and then had to move it because she was not, um, I guess diligent enough to realize that the electric meters were right behind where I was going to put the hot tub. I didn't know anything about electricity and where you put a hot tub. There was a plug there, I thought, "Well, why not put it there?" So, I wrote a letter to Mr. Johnson with a copy of it to Mr. Fornier, asking for my hundred dollars back, because I felt as being a law-abiding citizen, I had done everything that they had asked me to do, including photographs, which I've been told are not there. Well, I don't know where they put them, but I printed them and brought them down. And they say, "Well, your schematic was wrong." I said, "Look, I told them I couldn't make stick people, let alone a schematic." And I've been refused my hundred dollars. So unless the city decides to reimburse me my hundred dollars, I don't plan on being a law-abiding citizen any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison?
Mayor, Commissioners, uh, I too would like to speak about the alleged piece of art that has been placed on the Veterans Memorial. It is incumbent on the veterans to be the guardians of the Veterans Memorial, because eventually, those of us who knew someone who's listed on the memorial will also be gone. There is other, more appropriate statuary available than has been placed there. Quite frankly, I prefer that the memorial stand alone in a quiet park setting. The DDA funded the memorial. I remember Shirley Smith saying, "If we're gonna do this, we're gonna do it right," and we did. My mission was to have the property dedicated so that it would not be moved again. With the help of Commissioner Carlo Gennati, we got it done. It will now take a public vote in order to move the memorial again. I just don't understand the reluctance on the part of the Arts Commission and the majority on the City Commission to relocate, or not to relocate this, uh, piece of art. Knowing your political persuasion, if this were the Ten Commandments or something related to the Civil War, you people would be bouncing off the walls to get it moved. Do the right thing and honor the veterans' request to relocate the piece of art, or put it somewhere and save it for the new park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Uh, yes, on the back.
Good evening again. Meredith Weston-Bakitis, uh, 3582 Arbor Ave. I just wanted to thank the Task Force for Normandy Oaks, that's why I'm here. Um, I think you guys have done a great job. I, I, I really love the plan and I want to support it, and I hope you all approve it, because I, you probably are sick of seeing me by now. This splash pad is gonna be awesome for the kids. I think it's a great compromise between people who wanted the nature areas, the soccer fields, the splash pads. Um, the only one thing, I'm not sure if that, it was, it's on the plan or not, I'm a little bit concerned, and I know this may have, like, the ship may have already, you know, sailed out of port by now, but the safety between the, the aqueducts and all the water with the splash pad, is there gonna be a fence around that or some kind of barrier? Because there's a lot of little kids, I have three, and it's really hard for me sometimes to keep an eye on that. So, I don't know if that's even possible, but I, I'm just a little bit worried. I, I don't know exactly how far apart the splash pad from the aqueducts, but I believe you have to cross over. I, I don't know the, the exact name for it either, but the water parts that you have to cross over, um, that is, that is a concern of mine, um, because my kids don't listen to me, so, um...
I'm not the only one.
That's why I'm here, because it's more peaceful here than it was at my house, so, um, and they're asleep. I, I only go home when they're really asleep, so I'm, that's why I'm still here. Um, but yeah, but thank you so much, and I hope that you all approve it, and we can move forward with this. Um, and that's all I have to say, so thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Mr. McGee, I see back there. All right. You got some good light on you, Mr. McGee. High-efficiency CFLs do amazing things.
Uh, Patrick McGee, uh, 4524 Elmhurst Avenue. Um, let me just start, I've been with this process for the Normandy Oaks, uh, Task Force for a long time as an active, uh, participant in the, uh, meetings. Uh, I'd like to thank Mike, uh, he's done an excellent job. Couldn't have picked a better person. Um, two actionable items I want to bring to your attention and talk to you about. On the proposal that you're gonna be looking at, the very last page, uh, there's a line item for a thousand, a hundred thousand dollars for screening for the Robertson Brothers. Um, I'd like you guys to debate that and reconsider. Um, the reason for this is a long list of items I'm gonna go through real quick. On, on your agenda today, you have Agenda Item 7P, the Robertson Brothers to resubmit their building plans. Um, uh, back, and this goes back a little bit further, so I'll be quick. Uh, back at the September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen meeting, the planning agenda meeting where Jim Clark and Tim Low, uh, of Robertson Brothers presented their PUD, uh, design. And at that meeting, uh, at the time, Mayor Jim Ellison stated that the intent was to keep the development its own community. And also, the Robertson Brothers, uh, homeowners were gonna be responsible for their own landscaping. Um, Robertson Brothers presented and requested that they go up to forty percent coverage. Um, the city recommended only thirty-seven point five percent be their coverage. So that was the first compromise. So what I'm gonna show is there, we've done a lot of compromising for Robertson Brothers and giving them a lot back. And I like to make the point that it's time for them to give a little bit back. Um, as we move forward here, bringing us to the next item, at the December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, uh, City Commission meeting at the mark of two hours and twelve minutes, a comment was made by the City Commission about what the impact was to the existing residents of the proposed park. The reply comment by Mr. Ford struck me a little wrong, and I'm not gonna read the whole comment here, but now that it's being converted into a park, you have to think that, and realize that part of the risk in buying there was that it was gonna be converted. I, I would like to think that buying a home near a park in Royal Oak should be an asset, not a risk. And so, this brings me to the next point here. On the February fifth, Normandy Oaks Task Force, a lobbyist for Robertson Brothers indicated that the Robertson Brothers would like the, the parking lot to be moved from the proposed area that's in. At that time, Jeff Clark mentioned that he didn't want the parking lot there. So, a private meeting between Jeff Clark and the, uh, architect, Mr. Ford, was made, and the parking lot was moved. Another compromise we did for the Robertson Brothers. And then, last point here is that, then, the park is not an extension of the Robertson Brothers' development. I feel that we've given so much to the Robertson Brothers that they should be able to afford a hundred thousand dollar screening that will both benefit their residents as well as the park, and it'd be a chance to show that they are good neighbors. That would allow us to spend more on the park itself if we took that line item out of the budget, so, thank you. Um, and then, last little thing, this is kind of a funny thing here. In the, and one of the pages, on page seven of your proposal, they, they show a, picked a graph of what the park could look like with pedestrians and people parked in the, parked in the parking lot. So if you pull that picture up, as you guys can look at it, it depicts a European car manufacturer as the main point of their car. It's a little insensitive. You think they could have picked a hometown model as their model for their park to be based in Royal Oak. It's these little details that our architect missed, which makes me concerned that their heart wasn't in it for the residents, their heart was in it for Robertson Brothers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Good evening. Laura Harrison, 2729 Trafford Road. I am standing here because Carol forgot to tell you something, so it's my, my turn. Uh, this is a letter to announce the Oakland County St. Patrick's Day Parade for this year is Saturday, March tenth, at ten AM, which is a change in the time, it's a little earlier, Washington Avenue in Royal Oak. Come join the fun. Bands, floats, sports teams, it's a family friend, friendly morning, and, uh, we're gonna have good weather, please. And, uh, like I say, the parade begins at ten AM. It starts at the middle school and goes south down to Seventh Street where it quits. Okey-dokey. One more comment. I want the burms to stay, because there are not a whole lot of people in Royal Oak that say, "I have a berm, my name is Harrison."
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. One, one thing to, uh, Ms. Davids, on the St. Patrick's Day announcement, are we not facilitating the sale of T-shirts?
The sale is over.
The sale is over.
Eight hundred dollars, though.
Okay, we did raise eight hundred dollars. Um, darn. I'll have to buy one from somebody.
You can have lids.
You can get one. I got one.
I know, I missed it. Uh, yes, sir. I did get the one hundred anniversary of our police department. That was a quick one.
My name is Roger Cottington. I'm the president of Royal Oak Fraternal Order of Eagles. I'm also a member of the American Legion and the Royal Oak Memorial Society. Uh, this is concerning the, uh, piece of art that's on the, uh, property over there where our monuments are. Uh, we would like to see that removed as well. Uh, I would ditto everything that, uh, Carol Hennessy said. Uh, I've been, I grew up in Royal Oak, I'm almost seventy years old. Royal Oak will always be my hometown. Very proud of Royal Oak. Uh, again, like I say, I'd like to see that piece of art moved. If they did put something in there pertaining to the veterans, uh, I think that would be acceptable. But, uh, that's just, I would agree with what Carol Hennessy said. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Cotting. And thank you for your service, and thank you for your help on the committee. Um, just one quick thing to note about it, um, I do believe, and Mr. Crispan isn't here, um, you know, the Commission for the Arts is always looking to receive applications for new art. I know we've had three installations of art at that place over the last few years. Um, and I think it's important that, um, you bring up a good point. If there's an interest in putting something there that's more germane, uh, to the memorial, I think we can get those applications in. I think this piece is due to move in the spring, if I'm not mistaken, just as the other two pieces had moved. So if that's something you're interested in, um, I, I really, we don't really pick the art up here. That's what we've charged our broader citizen body to do. So if, um, if you're interested in that, please contact our Commission for the Arts. I know they're always looking for, uh, new ideas, and, and we charge them with, you know, analyzing the art and going through, and I, and I think it's a good idea, so. Did I again? Oh, Mr. Crispan's here. Are my estimations, am I memory correct?
Yeah, the piece is scheduled to be moved in the summer this year. Uh, and yeah, the Commission for the Arts is always taking applications for public art projects. Applications could be found online at romy.gov backslash arts. Um, or you could contact the City Manager's Office, and we can help you out with getting a paper copy.
Or write any of the, uh, Commission for the Arts members. You know, I think they're out there. Contact information should be okay to track down with Facebook and Twitter and all these things that people tell me I should be using more often. Okay. Um, I see Mr. Gomez. Mr. Gomez is gonna tear his bicep there. He's been raising his hand since the, uh, beginning of the evening. I'm sorry, Mr. Gomez.
That's all right. Well worth the wait. Thank you.
George Gomez, twenty eighteen Guthrie Avenue, Royal Oak, Michigan, of course. Uh, what I wanted to, uh, to say was that with such a perfect plan for Normandy Oaks, I am truly sorry that we're no burms included, because we would have had more people come out for you. But what's really nice about it is that not only was there a great compromise, but I truly, really believe it's a fair project, because it kept everybody within check of how much we were spending on any one topic. So I really commend, uh, the folks involved, uh, as well as Mike, and of course, Noah and Fraus. I really think that they took all the comments, as you look through this, and if you listen to some of the folks that sat there, and I really think they came with a balance. They didn't put cement where there wasn't cement absolutely needed. Uh, they didn't create a splash park that was so huge that only the north end would be able to witness it. But more importantly to me now is that I look at a plan that I'd like to see maybe some pieces of it implemented someday, as we learned about some of these topics into the south end, especially when I hear how many people are moving into that south end when we talk about the traffic. So I think there are really some very, very important things about that plan, and I really wanted to commend everybody. And if someone who lives in the furthest street south in Royal Oak and the furthest east part of Royal Oak, who will most likely not go all the way out there, I still, as a, as a resident, can support that without any doubt. So I wanted to share that with you, because, uh, I, I really think it's important that you know it's everyone. And I truly hope no one delays it, because I think this city has really been looking for this to go forward. Uh, I really think that Noah and Fraus had brought in the experience, and they took everything in consideration, and they really were looking at price in consideration for us as well. So, I, I do hope everyone here can, can support that and move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez.
Hello, Chris Maceau, six oh one North Alexander. I'm also the president of the Royal Oak Youth Soccer Association. Uh, we're an organization that, uh, has twenty-one hundred kids play with us each year. Been around for over forty years. We have three hundred and fifty adult volunteers that help run the organization. We ran the charrette, soccer fields, got far and away the most stickers. Uh, we had probably sixty different people, not always me, different people come out and speak at City Commission meetings, speak at the Normandy Oaks meetings. We had some kids get up at the last City Commission meeting, some girls very passionately speak about how they need better soccer fields to play, because they're playing in the outfield at Warden Park. Uh, we received four hundred signatures in one day that I collected at our opening day event. We submitted that. And the truth of the matter is, Royal Oak, we only have soccer fields at Quickstead Park. Other communities like Rochester and Troy will have ten plus in one location. Uh, so what we're asking here today is if the city was able to move some additional, remove that, move that second field into Phase One and provide some irrigation. The other thing I'll point out is, when this ballot proposal went on to sell Normandy Oaks, we were approached to support it. We were told that there would be two soccer fields at that time. We did support it, and if you look at the initial drawings in the newspapers, you'll see that there were two fields there. So we're just asking, it's not a lot of money, but if we could move into Phase One, the irrigation for both fields, we've got a detention bond, we've got the splash pad if we're recycling that water, or if not, we could use that, set the irrigation up right now for both fields, and also drainage for that second field. The drainage isn't just for us. My experience with Normandy Oaks is it's a wet site in the spring, so we, we're moving all the dirt, we're moving everything out there right now. We get that site dry, people can use it for picnics, people can use it to play catch, people can use it to fly a kite, walk, run. We'll dry the site, it'll be benefit for everybody. Do it right now if we can. I imagine the significant cost savings while all the earth is being moved. And, uh, the other reason we need the second field is because of the number of players we have. We also have eight over thirty women's teams. One field will get beat up very quickly, so we need that second field, because we have to rest a field every year, ideally. So, having both fields will allow us to rest one while we play in the other one. If we don't have both fields, we're not gonna be able to do rest. So I guess I appreciate everything that's been done. I like the design of the park, but I'm asking if we could use some efficiencies and move that second field into Phase One. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maceau. Anybody else here to speak tonight at public count? Mr. Wolf?
It won't be easy, but I'll try to be respectful. Ron Wolf, three 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 North Troy Street. Uh, this study about the burms, I gather the premise presented by the scholarly gentleman who, uh, went to school in Florida and, and did his, and made an excellent report, was how would traffic, uh, be affected if the burms are removed, which is almost like a, uh, wishful answer that you want the burms removed. of a faucet affect the flow of water into a sink? The answer is obvious. Remove the burms, you're going to get more traffic. Now, as far as the $12,500 study, I have watched this commission for a long time now. Can anyone remember any study you have paid for that where the results were contrary to what you were proposing? Can anyone remember? So I'm answering, why spend all these money on studies if the answers are going to be obvious? Years ago, I remember some people, I don't forget which burms, requested to have them replanted and fixed up. I would like to see this commission take the $12,500 that was wasted on this study and at least establish a matching fund so that all these burms can be repaired, replanted, and made to look nice. I'm sure the residents, now that they're organized, would be happily involved in helping get that done. And I'm sure you're going to see a tremendous amount of beautification in that area of the city. It saddened me when South Main Street was done, and I remember one lady who owned a business, she used to plant flowers and came up and said how she was on the planning commission and everything else. And she was disappointed that she was losing all her frontage in parking and after she worked so hard. It's a shame that people aren't respected. John Williams, I was 14 years old when he was serving his country, and yet he had his hand up for such a long time. He's a living monument to what the veterans are about, and yet you disrespected him. I don't understand why. Please explain. Okay. Now, I want to make a short comment on the Normandy. I don't understand why you need a paved path for walking. I reiterate it. If you have a paved path, a path that's impervious to water, all you're going to do is encourage bikers to bike faster and possibly run into joggers. And I want to point out that if somebody falls on soft dirt, they're less likely to hurt themselves. And if they fall on hard pavement, and of course, cement is the worst surface to fall on, I hope it's not going to be a cement path. The only places I can see where a paved path is necessary in this 40-acre park is where you need to be, for wheelchairs, handicapped accessible. I would, I prefer to see a dirt path and the money saved be used elsewhere. And I wanted to make a comment on buses, but I don't have enough time. I would like to see the Detroit Zoo involved. I would like to talk to somebody later about my idea of having the zoo participate in creating a bus service that would start from the hotel and go to the zoo and back through Royal Oak. Of course, the zoo would benefit by having their advertising all over the bus. They would pay for 75% of the cost of running the bus. The fare shouldn't be any more than a dollar for both ways. And in return, I think the city should talk to Mr. Singh about donating some land for needed parking structure for the zoo. So I just never understood why Royal Oak never got more involved with this, with what I consider the equivalent of Disneyland, so right next door to the city, and how it could benefit the city. The zoo is spending $12 million right now on a project of, you know, showing the need to preserve our environment for hunt, for, you know, for natural, our natural environment. Okay, my time is up. I'm going to respect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Anybody else here to speak at public comment this evening? Okay, we're going to close public comment, bring the meeting back up to here. I know we've been here a while. If everyone is patient, I think we can get through the first few items here as opposed to taking a recess. So this brings us to item number six, which is the approval of the agenda. Ms. Macy?
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the resolution to the support of the March for All Lives.
Okay. We have a motion made by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion? Commissioner Levasseur?
I also would like to see something added. And I take this is not the time to talk about what's on the consent agenda, but what we want to add. In addition to the addition that Ms. Macy referenced, I'd like to see us talk a little bit more about the art that's neighboring us here by the memorial.
Okay, you want to make that in form of an amendment to the motion?
I would make that motion to amend, add that to Ms. Macy's motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, yes.
Okay. All right. The amendment on the table to add the discussion on the piece of art. Is there discussion? I'll just add that, you know, we have spoken about this at length at this commission table before. I know those who are opposed to the art have made their opinions heard. I know that they presented those opinions to the Arts Commission. I know that the piece of art is, you know, going to be moving in the spring and that there's always options to put art in that spot. And, you know, we gave advice on how to petition for it. And I know there's a whole myriad of other folks that, like the art, veterans alike, that I've received feedback from. So I don't know how much further we can discuss this issue at length, given we have so many other people here tonight to hear about Normandy and the burms. Commissioner Levasseur?
I would like to get a little bit more information. And I did speak with the city manager, Mr. Johnson, a few months back about this issue. And the impression I had was that it may be scheduled to be removed maybe around May or so, but there's a little ambiguity there. I'd like to get a little bit more specific. I know I've heard the spring here from you, James, who looks like he stepped out of the room. He was talking in terms of the summer. I certainly would like to see it removed before Memorial Day. That certainly would seem to be a very appropriate time.
Okay. So the amendment on the table right now is, that we're discussing is whether or not to add it to the agenda. We actually don't want to, and I apologize, I kicked it off and I was actually talking about the agenda item and I'm trying to be the biggest stickler. So I'll just add, you know, I'm not going to be supporting the amendment only because if it's for informational purposes, you know, we can do that outside this meeting to get that information from city staff. So any further discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Show a hand on the nose. Okay, the motion pushes, the amendment fails. Okay, so now we're back to the original motion of Commissioner Macy. Is there any further discussion on the proposed agenda for this evening? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes. We have an agenda. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda as our new process. Is there any commissioner that wishes to pull something off the consent agenda to talk about? Commissioner Levasseur?
I would like to pull A, which deals with the strategic plan.
Okay.
I would also like to pull D, purchase orders. E, which deals with amendments to our budget. And F, which deals with the pension actuarial evaluation report.
Any others? Given the audience here tonight, with that, I guess when you move the consent agenda with those items being removed, can we move those to the end of the agenda? If that's satisfactory?
Certainly.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion for the changed consent agenda as presented by Commissioner Levasseur.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Levasseur. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion?
Well, just a question. We have on the agenda the item number 10, which is the adoption of the fiscal year strategic plan. I'm not sure what a discussion of the minutes from that meeting would bring us. I mean, the minutes just say we had a meeting, we talked about strategic planning, whereas we've got an agenda item dealing with the substance of that plan.
Okay. Commissioner Levasseur?
I have no problem consolidating it with that, with that agenda item.
All right, so to be clear, your motion is to move forward the consent agenda, pulling D, E, and F off and adding it to the end of the agenda for discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Gibbs, is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Any other discussion? Commissioner Perush?
Could you just restate again which ones are coming off the consent agenda? I started writing and then I...
Yeah, sure. D, E, and F.
D, E, and F. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, wait. Yeah, you know what? I'm not going to read the consent agenda, if that's okay. We have a long evening already. Typically, we read it. It's a long consent agenda, so I am just going to call for the vote. I'll take that privilege. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Okay, that brings us to item number eight this evening, the approval of the January 2018 Traffic Committee resolutions.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. The Traffic Committee met in late January on the 23rd. We had two items on our agenda. One was for a permit parking zone on Parker Drive between Coolidge and Woodward. And the other item on the agenda was the presentation of the traffic study for the six road closures in the south end, which are being referred to as burms. And there are two resolutions before you this evening, one for each item. Here to answer any questions from you. And Dan Goddick, the chairperson of the Traffic Committee, is also here.
Welcome, Mr. Goddick.
Good evening.
Good evening. Any questions for Mr. Callahan or Mr. Goddick? Commissioner Levasseur?
One of the presenters tonight showed us a map that had a, what looked like a number seven road closure on Longfellow. Is this something that the Traffic Committee has considered yet?
No, there has been no consideration for that. One of the items that was discussed at the Traffic Committee was to do a traffic and speed study on the three north-south streets, Mohawk, Wyandotte, and Longfellow, all at one time. And when that comes back to the City Traffic Committee, we'll talk about the traffic volumes on those streets and any speed issues that come up as part of that study and possible traffic mitigations, such as the half diverter similar to what Mohawk has. So it'll be coming up in the future.
Any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Douglas, I'm sorry, I have you written here, but it is getting late.
It's that fast.
It is.
Yes, the, we saw a very strong recommendation by the staff, the city's staff, to remove most of these burms. And yet, the committee voted unanimously right not to follow their advice. And I wondered why it is you, why you disregarded their advice.
It gets rather simple. You've heard most of the reasons tonight from the residents. We did have a very similar showing that evening of people coming out. And our charge is basically safety. When we looked at what would happen with the burms coming out, you're going to get more traffic. And the potential there is to be less safe. That's as simple as I can state it. And we were convinced of that by the residents coming out. And through the study itself, that was commissioned, it did show the traffic counts and how they would increase. It's a unique area. You've heard it tonight that the 696 Bermuda, Mohawk exit there is very unique to the city. It's been in place a long time. I was quoted that it's working right now and we shouldn't mess with it. And that was the general consensus of the committee.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Callahan or Mr. Goddick? Okay. Commissioner Macy?
Not a question.
Not a question? That's fine.
Not to be anticlimactic, but move for approval of the Traffic Committee's resolutions?
Okay, second by Commissioner Perush? Okay, discussion. Commissioner Macy, the floor is yours.
I think this has been very well discussed tonight, very thoroughly by all the people who came out. Appreciate everyone for coming out and letting us know what you think. This, it seems, like Mr. Goddick said, like primarily to be a safety issue when it boils down to it. And there's an overwhelming support to keep them in there. People like the burms, they moved there for them. And there's not a great reason in my mind to remove them, so I don't think, I think we're good on discussion for that.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Perush?
Not to take a whole lot of time, but I really appreciate all of the effort that everyone that spoke tonight put into their presentations and the fact that someone has so carefully saved all of those newspaper articles and has been able to reproduce them in a way that we can all appreciate them is, was very impressive to me. So I think all of us are very grateful for all of the amount of time and effort that all of the residents have put into thinking about this and working on this project. I was here when the burms were first installed. I'm one of the few that was still here. And I remember that the, one of the preeminent reasons why at least the initial berm on Irving was installed was the fact that 696 was not connected. There was an end of the east-west route at Mohawk and that was the only way you could get in and off the freeway. And as a result, the amount of traffic on that road at that exit was just extraordinary. And then things evolved from there as the freeway was completed. The neighborhood was a lot different in a lot of ways then than it is now. The amount of growth, the amount of new families, the amount of new housing, the amount of investment in individual residential properties in those neighborhoods has just been extraordinary over the past 30 years. It used to be, 30 years ago, an area that was not very popular. It was not well-regarded in terms of, you know, the overall city as an area that was acceptable for residents and attractive to residents for living there. That has significantly changed over a period of time, to the residents' credit, in terms of the amount of investment that they've put into the community. I think one of the things that is most persuasive to me about keeping the burms in place is not the traffic counts or any of the detailed reasons that were enumerated tonight, it's the character of the neighborhood that has developed because, I think in large part, because of the existence of the burms. And it has less to do with safety and less to do with traffic counts than it just is with the overall character of the neighborhood that those burms have created. And I can appreciate that because something very similar to that exists in the neighborhood where I live. We live close to Vinsata Boulevard, south of 12 Mile, which used to have a stream running down it, the middle of it. And there were bridges over the stream. The stream is now in a big pipe, way underground. The bridges, however, are still there. There have been incidents regarding those bridges over the period of years, which have led to a lot of people to suggest that we should just take those bridges out. Unfortunately, there was an incident about 25 years ago where four high school kids had been drinking, came home in the middle of the night, took one of those curves over the bridges at too high of a rate of speed, and one young man died. In another incident about 10 years later, some big truck managed to try to turn, right hand 90 degrees over the bridge, took out about a third of the bridge on one side. There was no money for the city to put it back together, so neighborhoods, neighbors took it upon themselves to actually get the materials and put the bridge back together. And in each one of those instances, city engineering and people who look at the safety issues and the engineering issues and widely suggested to us, we should just take the bridges out. It's time to take the bridges out, they don't serve any purpose, and they can be a safety hazard if you disregard the way you should be driving over them. And in each one of those occasions, the neighborhood said, "Yeah, fine, but they really contribute to the ambiance of the neighborhood and we'd like to keep them and we'd like to save them." And they've actually contributed money to maintaining them to make sure that they stay. So when the neighbors here in the area south of Lincoln say that these burms just contribute to the ambiance of the neighborhood and have helped that neighborhood grow, I can appreciate that because we're doing the same thing in our neighborhood. We're keeping those, we're keeping those crazy bridges, even though they can be a safety hazard, because they contribute to the ambiance of the neighborhood and we all appreciate them and we're willing to sacrifice in order to keep them in place. So because I am sympathetic to that argument from the neighborhood, very sympathetic, I really think that the burms should stay.
Thank you, Commissioner Perush. Before I get to Commissioner Douglas, I'd be remiss if I didn't read a statement that was provided to me by Commissioner Dubbuck. So I'll hear it all night if I don't read it. So this is from Commissioner Dubbuck. It's related to the burms, and I told him I would read it for him in his absence.
really think that the BURMs should stay.
Thank you, Commissioner Perush. Before I get to Commissioner Douglas, I'd be remiss if I didn't read a statement that was provided to me by Commissioner Dubbuck, so I'll hear it all night if I don't read it. So this is from Commissioner Dubbuck. It's related to the BURMs, and I told him I would read it for him in his absence. "As a Commissioner, I've been consistently committed to ensuring Royal Oak is a walkable, pedestrian-friendly community. Over the years, many of us at the table have championed the ideal that cities are for people, not cars. So in my view, removing the BURMs in a residential area solely to make it easier for traffic to move through would run completely contrary to the many of the values that we've been championing as a city. Therefore, I oppose the removal of the BURMs and encourage my colleagues to vote and leave them in place." Commissioner Kyle Dubbuck. Commissioner Douglas?
So I'm going to support this motion, but probably not for the reasons that everybody else is supporting it. And I'm basing my opinion on two of my principles: the need for good planning and the need to manage our funds wisely and in the best interest of the most people. So we know these BURMs were established because this end of the city was economically disadvantaged in the 1970s, and then to protect it from truck traffic coming off and other traffic coming off the freeway. So this was at a time when this area was disproportionately disadvantaged by circumstances. Over the years, though, we've seen that these BURMs have created economic advantage. As Commissioner Perush points out, there's been an economic revival there. We've further seen that truck traffic has diminished as the industrial use has diminished, and that existing truck traffic has been routed to actually a more advantageous route up Main Street. So now, we see that local residents are benefiting disproportionately from these circumstances. A street grid spreads traffic more or less evenly throughout the city. It's one of the things that makes our city desirable. It's fair. All residents benefit equally. Now, I'm sure there are many neighborhoods in Royal Oak whose residents would like to close their busy streets. There's lots of people in Royal Oak who would like to have BURMs to protect their streets. But there are also people who want to drive to destinations in this neighborhood who waste gas and time getting there or getting out because of the BURMs. So the BURMs do not represent fair traffic management. So I'm going to speak on behalf of the other 11 square miles of Royal Oak and say that on principle, I would remove these BURMs. But there's also the issue of cost. Removing the BURMs or rebuilding them would cost, in either case, in broad, round numbers, $200,000. If we did that, that's money we'd have to take from park or road construction projects elsewhere in the city, further benefiting this area at the expense of other parts of the city. So I am going to say that I don't want the BURMs removed, but I also do not want to see them replaced or improved, at least not at the expense of the rest of the city. That might mean that we have neighbors adopt these BURMs, as many of them have, establish community gardens, leave it to them to decide what they want them to look like. Or if there's disagreement on that, or if there's agreement, establish a special assessment district, or assess the neighboring properties, find some way to pay for any improvements that we might make. So that is why I will support the motion to retain the BURMs, but, as I say, not for the reasons others have espoused.
Anybody else wish to have any discussion on the topic? I mean, I'll just close with a few of my comments. I mean, I kind of gave the history about, you know, where we were with this study, why we did it, and, you know, some of the neutral results we were hoping to find. I got to tell you, though, I got to step back. Thank you for all the neighbors that came out. Thank you for taking time to come out here. Thank you for your well-articulated arguments to keep the BURMs, even maybe one to eliminate the BURMs. I really appreciate that, and I know the rest of the Commission appreciates that as well. Often, we fall victim to hysteria and rumors and rhetoric, and I think sticking to the facts really allowed us to have a healthy conversation with the neighborhood directly impacted by this potential decision. And I want to thank Mr. Colo. I know he called me a few times, and I called him a few times, and the folks that reached out emailed me. I did the best I could to email everyone back as timely as possible, but, you know, sometimes there's a lot of issues going on, 60,000 people in the community. You might hear from me a month from now, and the vote's already done, so I apologize for that. But I really want to thank him for reaching out to me, persuading me on a couple issues here as well, talking it out, really trying to funnel and understand what the neighbors in this area really wanted. And I think we had really good dialogue and really prepared me, at least here, to make a decision that I'm confident in, and I think the rest of the Commissioners will be confident in the decision they make. Just a couple things. I mean, going back to this area, that kind of, you know, a lot of stuff has been talking about the truck route. I'm glad to say that we rerouted the trucks. Yep, guess what? Some people break the rules. We can look at enforcement again. But, you know, our intent is to make sure we preserve the beauty of this neighborhood. It's really awesome. It's a great place for families to go and live and raise your children. I don't live too far away, and I often fast-walk, I won't say jog, in the area. Some of the comments that stuck out to me, the whole argument about Waze and Google and all of this, you know, I've driven through some of Southfield's neighborhoods coming home from work, from Farmington Hills to Royal Oak, so I know exactly what that means when someone finds a good route. And I think that's something over the last few weeks that's really resonated in my head as I was driving through a neighborhood in Southfield. I'm like, huh, if there's a traffic jam on 696 or whatever, that's probably going to, you know, drive additional unwanted traffic in the area. I think the discussion on what we're doing, which actually, if my memory serves me correct, the study was commissioned before we really had a lot of traction on the discussion with changes to Campbell, which, you know, aren't necessarily going to increase congestion. I just want to calm your fears. I mean, there's a lot of good work out there. You can ask the City of Birmingham about what they've done on Maple. So we're looking at those and exploring those things, and that really resonated with me as well. You know, I'm going to be supporting this, obviously. I think keeping the status quo is fine, but I'd really like to see those BURMs cleaned up. I think we have to find a way to make sure that they're well-maintained. You know, I spoke to Mr. Colo about it. Commissioner Douglas and I and Planning Commission hustled down a bunch of developers for some extra trees to plant in the community somewhere, so always negotiating, not just at this table. And so we have an opportunity to get some trees from some developers that are putting up buildings across the city to maybe use in this area. But I think we can work out those details with the neighbors. I mean, the important thing is, is that we keep the BURMs and, you know, move forward and figure out a plan to make them nice and keep the neighborhood beautiful, and even come up with really creative uses for the BURMs as well. I will say, the argument's been made to me several times, and by the way, even though a lot of people didn't show up tonight supporting the removal of the BURMs, you know, I got to acknowledge the fact that I did receive a number of emails from people with good reasons. They're not bad neighbors. They're not good neighbors. They just have a different perspective, and I appreciate everyone being respectful of everyone's different perspective. But what, you know, for me, in my neighborhood, I live on South Alexander, and, you know, I have neighbors come to me, and they'll often argue, "Well, because of all these traffic controls, people come off 11 Mile and they zip down South Alexander," and at some point, I am my own traffic mitigation control device in my robe, taking out the garbage, yelling at speeders. I'm sure you can all get a picture of that and use it against me, but, you know, so... But as mayor, and not as a dad on that street, or, you know, somebody who cares about the 15 kids on our street from Lincoln to Six, I got to make a vote tonight in the overall best interest of the community, not my overall personal interest. So with good conscience, I have no other choice but to support this resolution or this motion. So with that, it's a late night, and I'm sure I'm putting you all to sleep, but I just want to say thank you again for coming out. Thank you for bearing with us all night. Thank you for articulating your arguments in a fair and respectful and productive way, and that's how we get good things done in the city. So if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. Just to remind everyone what the motion is, because I did talk a while, it's to approve the recommendations from the Traffic Committee, which includes keeping the BURMs, okay? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes. BURMs stay. You can clap. All right, let's... Let's give a big thanks to Mr. Callahan and Mr. Goddick. They worked very hard on this. I don't know what that feedback is, but thank you, gentlemen, for your efforts.
It's Brandon's birthday, so it could be his birthday gift.
Oh, it's Brandon's birthday today, too? Number seven's or number one's birthday?
Just BURMs is just what we always wanted.
Right. We'll let the room clear a little bit here. Okay, you know what? Everyone, if you're okay, I know the Normandy Oaks people have been very patient as well. We're going to take a short recess.
Thank you.
I've lost a quorum here anyway, so we're going to take a brief recess. This brings us to item number nine, the Normandy Oaks Task Force Recommendation. Mr. Rassell?
Good evening, Mr. Rassell. Yeah, before we get into the Normandy Oaks Task Force, as was mentioned by Mr. Rapinski, Todd Gazetti's retiring the first part of March, so I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce John Fidelli, who's joining us from the city of Newberry, Florida. He's originally from West Bloomfield, Michigan, so he knows what he's moving back to weather-wise. So, but I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce John tonight to everyone and welcome him to the team. So, and he picked a good meeting to come to.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
They're all like this.
So, but the Normandy Oaks Task Force met and made a final recommendation, and at this time, a very short summary presentation will be given by Mr. Hutter and Mr. Ford concerning how we got to the final recommendation for Phase One.
Jeff Hutter with Norcan Frost Engineers. This is... Tonight's meeting is really the culmination of what we would characterize as a very successful public engagement process. It's been... Through this process, it's been wholly inclusive as far as gaining critical feedback from all the residents through the design charrette, through the many public meetings and public engagement processes that we've had through this. And what that was able... allowed us to do is to really zero in on a, what we would characterize as a fairly obvious development plan. So I'm just going to run through just a couple of slides for you very quickly here. The first slide, and you do have handouts for all of this, was really a synopsis of the recommendation that came from the Task Force. I don't want to read that. I know that you guys received this information in advance. The first graphic, when we were first before the City Commission, it was recommended or requested that we prepare two separate concept plans. I just wanted to assure the Commission that two concept plans were prepared and presented to the Task Force. Concept One and Concept Two. Concept Two and Concept One were fairly similar in many regards, but they had a lot of differences and deviations at the same time. And what we asked the Task Force to do is to really focus in on each element of the concepts, what they liked, what they didn't like about those concepts. And from that, we were able to draw a blended plan that came together, which is really the term, the Normandy Oaks Master Plan. So Concept One, Concept Two, we were able to extract all of the important elements for each of those concepts and develop one cohesive plan. After that, what we did was we looked at the listing of priorities which came out of the public engagement process. And the top 10, top 11 elements are displayed on your screen: soccer, swimming pool, aquatic center, nature trails, picnic area shelter, restroom, splash pad, paved pathways, scenic ponds, channels, play equipment, selective habitat restoration, and sledding. What we did was we were able to work and develop a... We're calling it the Phase One Plan, which is basically spending the allocated budget dollars for this project of $3 million, and we developed the Phase One Plan, what you see before you. The Phase One Plan really took various elements of the project and tried to balance the overall cost of the project. So for example, if you look in the... I'm going to toggle between these two plans real quickly. If you look at the Master Plan, you can see... Pointer. Can you see my mouse? If I'm using a mouse?
Yeah.
If you look at the parking area as an example here, it's a very... This parking is required to support the full function of the park, but when we go to the Phase One Plan, we've landbanked some of the parking areas in through here. And that's because we can't fully develop the park, and what we didn't want to do is build all of the parking lot initially so that we could use those for the critical elements that we wanted to support the overall park function. So taking that kind of an approach to this, there's some areas where we have paved pathways in Phase One. Basically, we have a paved pathway loop around the western loop, and then we have gravel pathways along the easterly loop. All of that is ADA compliant, but that was, again, a way for us to take monies that maybe we could have spent in paving, but we wanted to be able to afford those top 10 elements as a part of this overall plan. So without going back and forth and showing all of those elements, I think that was kind of the idea. So when we look at the Phase One Plan, we have allocated budget dollars for a splash pad in this location, playground here. This is a toilet... or, excuse me, a toilet-building pavilion, possibly some concessions. We're showing a maintenance building over in this location. We're providing for one soccer field. What was discussed and as a part of this is we will be doing the mass balancing, the tree clearing, for the second soccer field. But what we couldn't afford as a part of the Phase One was the underground stormwater drainage and other elements, irrigation and things for the second soccer field. So you will end up with a larger open area in this second field area. We have a sledding hill, which is identified here at number 14. And then we have a lot of passive recreational opportunities in this whole eastern area through here. We've actually adopted a mowed pathway kind of concept in through there so that we didn't have to pay for the aggregate, saving those dollars to be able to stretch the budget even further. So, and that was one of the things that did come up through the public engagement process was providing opportunities for that recreation. It didn't necessarily have to be structured or paved. Walking on the grass is actually something that a lot of the residents identified as enjoyable. As a part of the Phase One, we did include a small improvement as a part of the Oaks Park development, and that is to just build the parking facilities. When we looked at the parking distribution and we looked at the total parking count to support everything that was a part of the Normandy Oaks project, we did need that parking down in that quadrant. If we're not going to improve this parking in this area, then we would have to expand the parking up in the northeast, northwest corner of the site. So this is a rendering of the bioswales. I'll just go back up one. This, we've developed a naturalized stormwater management system, including bioswales, bio-retention areas. We're going to have regular detention areas up and through this area, up and through here. And this was a graphic that kind of portrayed what that would look like coming off of the parking lot. Educational opportunity, providing robust stormwater quality, control measures as a part of the overall development, culverts with, actually looking like bridges, but actually just culverts provided in those areas. So just some very unique ways to be able to express some interesting design elements as a part of the project. In the going back up, this is a more of a naturalized area up and through this area. This is a kind of a representation of what it could look like with the proper amount of restoration that's being proposed as a part of the project. Open field, prairie-style look to it. This is what an oak savanna would look like when we go back up to the plan. This is these large stands of trees up and through here, this whole area up and through here. These are the areas that would really are indicative of what that oak savanna might look like as a part of a restoration project. Some precedent images just for your pavilions and restroom facilities. This is just something that we know that has been constructed for the budget dollars that we've allocated. Certainly, once the architect has evolved with it, we can go a couple of different directions with it, but at least gives you an idea of what the budget was allocating. Another photo of the pavilion area. And then when we looked at the splash pad, the splash pad had, and as part of the Phase One, there was kind of, we call it the base model, which is identified in our cost estimate around $285,000. And then we had an expanded model. This is the base model. This is kind of a graphic of what that might look like. This is the base model, this is kind of a graphic of what that might look like. Schematic layout of that. And then this is something that, basically another $75,000, $100,000 would get you as far as the splash pad goes. So, something definitely a little bit more robust, a little bit larger as far as being able to serve a larger population of the community. Just a schematic of that. And then when we looked at the cost estimates, I don't know how much detail you want me to go into with respect to this. The Elks Park, total dollar value on that was around $687,000. That's the full master plan. We understand that there's CDBG funds that may be available to partake in paying for all or some of those elements of the Elks Park. And then when we looked at the overall cost estimate for the entire project, we're in that $5.5 million range for the entire master plan. Obviously, we can't afford $5.5 million worth of improvements out there. We're stuck with the $3 million budget. And that's where we went to develop that Phase One Plan. The Phase One Plan, we identified about $200,000 of that $600,000, $670,000 budget for Elks Park was just attributed to the parking and some of the things that we felt were in support of Normandy Oaks Park. And then we've reduced the numbers of pavilions to a certain number to be able to bring this within budget. So if you go through the detailed cost estimate, you'll see there's a lot of line items in the Phase One budget that have zero quantity. That means that those elements were actually taken out of the, from the master plan, taken out of that for the Phase One Plan. So altogether, we've identified a total construction cost budget of $3 million for what you see on the Phase One Plan. And then we had, identified some project alternates, just so that you guys had an understanding. Let's say that somebody decided that they didn't want to do all the native restoration, but we have $219,000 in there for that. Well, we could spend that possibly on something else if that was what was desired. And then you have a menu of choices there, what the additional soccer field would cost, additional paved pathways, splash pad upgrade. And one of the elements was project fencing. We still haven't determined whether or not we're going to put fencing around the park or not. Certainly, we were not advocating for it, but that's a decision that needs to be made. So where we're at today is hopefully, with your questions, we can answer today. And we want to be able to kick this thing off to a design. I think that overall, again, the community has done a tremendous job in coming together and really helped guiding this overall process. The community really needs to be commended for that. I'm not saying it made our job easy, but it made the solution for this park very clear is the overall plan, so.
Questions? Mr. Macy?
We had a question from the audience tonight about the safety of the bioswales. Is there a danger for children with that, with the depth that those are?
No, bioswales are meant to hold water for less than a 24-hour period and usually it's no more than eight inches of water. They get pretty mucky, I mean, you're not going to want to walk through there. Certainly, there'll be some level of signage associated with, what those function, why they're functioning that way. And as the vegetation grows in there, it's not something that kids are generally going to want to go into. I mean, it's going to be pretty weedy, the plant materials will be pretty robust in there. It's not something that's really inviting to be able to walk in and navigate into.
Thank you. Would there be cost savings from doing the drainage and irrigation for both soccer fields at the same time now?
Generally, yes, not a huge amount of savings. I think that the, the underground drainage is usually pretty shallow. So, just a simple trenching it in with a ditch witch or something along those lines is something that can be accommodated. What you're really paying for is the remobilization for those forces to go back out there. Certainly, there would be some cost savings to do it now, but quantifying it, you know, it's not, it's not going to be more than 10% of what those cost items are.
And then, at the meeting this last time, we talked about possibly making, having this cut-through path be the aggregate so that it would be, because there's quite a long, if you, it's, these moaned paths are not ADA compliant. So if you want to get from this point to this point, it's quite a long path around. Did we, I didn't notice the difference in the cost, did that get added in or not?
We did not, but I did have those numbers. If we wanted to pave that pathway across that, it's about a $40,000 add. If we're just looking at gravel, it's about a $25,000 add.
And the other part of that east path is going to be the gravel, the aggregate, right?
Correct.
Okay, so $20,000 for that?
$25,000.
$25,000, okay. Okay, that's all for me.
Other questions? Commissioner Gibbs?
I was wondering, because I don't see in, on, on the thing we were handed out, the packet we were handed out, or in your presentation, where are the costs for maintenance of the splash pad, the soccer fields? Like the yearly estimated maintenance costs?
We haven't gotten to that level of detail yet. We are really just looked at construction budget so far. So, I don't have an answer for you as far as the overall maintenance. I mean, we've been throwing some maintenance numbers around, but I think overall, we still need to go through the design process to get into that.
But we have to remember to think forward on this too, so.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, everything that we're going to be doing will be looked at from a maintenance perspective, so, absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perusch?
For the moment, I just have one question, and it's very similar to Commissioner Macy's question about the bioswales. I also had the same question about the bioswales and the retention of water in there and the potential hazard, and I understand that now, especially since we've got a couple of other bioswales around the city who are not full of water all the time. It's just when we have tons of rain that they fill up and then they, it disappears. But I have a question about the water retention in the pondish area, which is down in the southeast corner, which you can see from Normandy as you go down now, the depth of it. And I'm just wondering, how much water that area is intended to hold on a regular basis? Or whether it too will function like the bioswale and will eventually dissipate and not really hold a lot of water? Because that's a much larger area to try to keep kids out of and that kind of thing. So that's my question, right now.
Typical stormwater detention requirements identify that the pond will drain within a 24 to 48-hour period. So, what you see pre-storm is basically what you're going to expect there to be most of the time. And then when you have a rain event or a big melt-off or something, then you'll have a rise in that, so. But that's, that's how our detention calculations are usually generated is for it to drain within 24 to 48 hours.
So it will function for the most part, just like the bioswales on the western side of the property?
The depth of the detention pond does get much deeper.
Yes, definitely, it is much deeper. But it'll function pretty much the same way?
Yeah.
Okay.
And typically, when you design detention, and we can look at engineering standards for the community here, but usually the one-on-six side slopes, there's acceptable standards within the industry that allow it to be open without having to fence it. Anything that's in that one-to-six, one, one foot of rise to six foot of fall, or one foot of rise to six foot of length, as long as you're in that area, typically fencing isn't required. If you get into steeper banks, one-on-three or steeper, that's when you have to fence them in, so, just as a general rule.
Yeah, if you look at the slope of it now, it's not that severe. It's a gradual slope, definitely.
So somebody waits out there, starts getting into the pond. I mean, they're going to walk 10, 15 feet in there and they're still going to be up to their knees, kind of a thing. But certainly a smaller kid, child, that would be more of a concern, but it's not unusual for this kind of a situation.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner LaBassar?
A couple of questions. First with regard to the splash pad, are we assuming that it's a freshwater system or a recycled system, or is this budget about the same either way?
Recycled, simply because it's a lot less to maintain or operate. So those costs are dramatically different than the flow-through system. So we're recommending that you go in that direction. We still have to go through the design and come up with those costs. On average, it takes an inspection daily. Usually takes between 15 minutes to a half an hour, to an hour, to make any adjustments. And the chemicals, so that, those are the costs.
Commissioner Douglas?
I'm sorry, I don't recall that. I thought the last word on this was that it was going to be a non-recirculating feature and that we would explore the possibility of having that water go into the retention ponds and potentially be used for irrigation.
That is the way the meeting concluded, that we were going to explore that. We still will and get you detailed information on that. But during that meeting, we did reach out to the experts in that area, Vortex, who we used as our consultant. And they basically confirmed that it would be less expensive to operate the recycled system versus the flow-through system. So, we will look at this again, it's not a done deal at this point. I'm just telling you that this, this is the direction that we were given at the end of that meeting. We actually adjourned the meeting before I had that information. I approached some of the committee members, I didn't get to you, obviously.
So when you say this is cheaper, how so? What are the significant costs with a freshwater system as opposed to a recirculating system?
It's about a four-to-one ratio.
I mean, but what are the elements? What are we paying for?
Paying in the recycled system?
In either, I mean, in the freshwater system, it's water.
Yeah, the freshwater, you're paying for water. So you're paying your rates that you're paying for water and also for discharge for sewer. Now if there's a way to eliminate that sewer discharge and use that water, you'd have to dechlorinate it, so it would be acceptable to be able to use as irrigation water. Those numbers are not making a lot of sense. They're getting too elevated, too high. The recycled system, chemicals, you have to pay for chlorine and basically meratic acid, those are the two things that you'd be using. They're not very dangerous chemicals, but they're chemicals that have to be applied. And then just check for maintenance items, clogs, leaves, blockages, things like that on a daily basis.
Well, but when you talk about the, the non-recirculating water, dechlorinating it, I mean, I don't dechlorinate my water before I water my lawn. Why would this be, are we going to chlorinate it? Or is it just coming out of the pipe and splashing over kids?
It's at a higher rate, so we would have to reduce that rate of chlorination in the system. But, once again, we can go through that analysis with you and give you the details on that from the experts. I am not the expert in that area, I'm just repeating what they've told me to this point.
I mean, I will say that my willingness to accept the splash pad was predicated on a system where the cost was primarily water and not staff time, checking chemicals, rebalancing chemicals and so forth. I mean, that was a crucial point for me.
That's what I've been told by the experts. You spend a whole lot more for water than you go for the staff time.
Yeah.
Well, and I guess I'll just interject, I mean, but if we're going to have to spend that amount of water irrigating the soccer fields, you know, we have to consider that. Because I understand empirically, just looking at the two different versions of splash pads, one could argue, look, you're paying for water, it's much more expensive than, you know, having someone come out and maintain a filtration system. However, if you're using that water to irrigate a field right next door, you know, does that make a difference? And so I think part of that equation, that cost equation, is to understand for us, you know, what are we going to spend on water for the soccer field? Because I don't think it's our intent just to use the water that's available after a rainstorm and we want to make sure that soccer field is kept in good shape.
Sure. And there's some storage issues that go along with that for the water from the public system as well.
Commissioner LaBassar?
For purposes of what we're doing today, is it critical for us to make a quick decision between the flow-through system and the recycled system? Or is it just basically, for us, you know, you're looking for us to say, yeah, we want to go with the splash pad, but give us the details later so we can decide what we want?
I think that's the, the way that you should go. It's been voiced from the public many different ways, that the priority was for some sort of a water feature. This is what came out of that process. Also, soccer was very high, those were two main components.
Okay, but as far as what the decision we need to make right now, it's not critical to decide what type of splash pad, whether it's...
No, it's not. It's not critical, but you do have to factor in those costs at some point in terms of operations.
All right, a couple of other follow-up questions. We were talking about the pathways and I believe you said it would be $25,000 for gravel for this one section versus $40,000 to pave it? So it's close to 60-40 type of breakdown, so. Is it a fair thing to say that generally speaking, gravel walkways will be about 60% of the cost of paved walkways? Or is that, am I off?
Generally speaking.
Would the same concept flow through if we're talking about the northern part of the, of the parking lot, which right now we're not doing anything with? But if we were to decide to expand it, would a 60% cost of, say, gravel parking be a reasonable approximation versus the cost of paving that area?
I, we haven't looked at it that way. You might be close, I just, I don't know, for sure. You know, I'd hate to say that that would be the case. So, because you're dealing, it's a, it's a much more in-depth process to put the gravel parking lot in place. There's a lot of excavation and other things to put a gravel pathway in. It's fairly benign associated with that. With the parking lot becomes, comes stormwater drainage and other elements that get tied into it, so.
So, the parking lot might be more than 60%? It might be 75, 80? We'd have to get to the details there at that point?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know if you were hearing in public comments, there was someone who raised the issue about part of a budget being $100,000 for screening for the new subdivision there. And I just wanted to see if that was an accurate reflection of what is costing for that area?
Yeah, as a part of the public engagement process, design charrette, there was a lot of people that were sensitive to what was going on in that neighborhood, the new neighborhood. And yes, we do have allocated in the current budget for $100,000 of landscape screening. It doesn't say necessarily how that's going to be done, that's really a design element at this point, but yes, it's in the budget.
Is that for the entire northern border of that subdivision? Or is that just covering the roughly one-half that borders the driveway from Delamere?
No, it would have been, it would have been along that entire buffer, along that entire subdivision. So the northern part and then also some along the eastern end of that sub. One of the things we really need to focus is really is the design issue because they're supposed to be putting garages back there. There's a lot of things that we need to factor in that we just don't have all the details right now. So, as a master plan, we're allocating a budget dollar for it.
Sorry, Commissioner LaBassar, I just want to follow up on that question. So, the thought was from the charrette, it wasn't to protect necessarily the homeowners that purchased the home from the view of the park, it was to preserve and make the park look more natural and not having to look at the back of a neighborhood? Is that what?
Really a combination of both, quite honestly. A combination of both. I think if you look strategically at how you could do some plantings in through there to hide some of those garages and things of that nature, I think that would be a benefit to the park, absolutely.
But was that really what came out of the, was it folks that, from our, not from that neighborhood because it doesn't exist yet? But was that really information that came out of that? People that participated to say, oh, we want screening there because we don't want to look at the backs of garages when we're on a hiking trail?
I don't recall a specific...
I just want to know the nature of where it came, it's not a bad idea, I just want to know where it came in.
Again, I think people were sensitive to what was, that there's an interface between the two and that there needed to be some treatment between that interface.
So I'll just add to that, we went in with pretty much a full screen along the entire property, both sides. There were neighbors that were there who had purchased lots, who have homes being built. They did make some comments about that, that we would like to see the park. Others said that they would like some trees in order to buffer. So you do have a combination of both. And there were representatives there, in addition to the developer, who said maybe we don't need that much screening. So I think the door is open to reduce the screening. And I think it will have to be on a selected basis, but I'm sure that there are many people that do not need and prefer the people that do not need and prefer the view of the park.
Yeah. I would, I would think if I bought a lot there, I'd wanna look out at the park, but also having everyone look out at me on my back porch might not be so fond either, but I do get the argument too, walking in the park where, you know, it, it does make it more natural if there is some screening there, but.
There's a couple of houses that are really a challenge. If you look at this particular house right here, you know, its side yard is right adjacent to the park. You know, their kitchen is gonna be looking at people walking in pathways. So, again, it's, it's more of a design element. You know, from a master planning perspective, it's appropriate that some level of buffering and things go in along through there rather than just looking at a, a back of, a row of garages, so.
Okay. Mr. Macy.
I have a question that I think is maybe for the planning commission. Do we know, so Robinson Brothers has to put lots of trees back in from the trees they took out. Do we know if they have a plan for all those trees or are they still looking for some places to put them?
They do have a tree plan.
Okay.
That's gonna overall grow the density of trees in that area. I think it was like a hundred and, gosh, I've seen so many plans, I don't even wanna quote a number, but I don't know where they're placed. I can't remember. It's a good question.
But they're all in there somewhere.
They're internal, you've seen--
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of them are internal, to be fair, yeah.
Trees, 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 on the edges.
Any other questions about any of the design elements or the costs or anything like that?
Commissioner Douglas.
I will move approval of the three million dollar plan as submitted.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion. Commissioner Douglas.
Excellent community feedback. This has just been a sterling example of comments from the public, thoughtful planning by knowledgeable engineers and designers, a give-and-take process. You know, what, what is it they say in a real estate deal? You know, everybody's equally happy or equally unhappy. We've got one soccer field instead of two. We have a splash pad. Everybody pretty much knows I'm mean mommy when it comes to splash pads. But in fact, what we came up with was far less expensive than we had initially thought. And we, it, by reducing that cost, I think we got some other features that were important to me. So, you know, being in elected office is the art of the compromise and I think this reflects a suitable level of compromise and our ability to live within our budget.
Commissioner Macy.
So, mostly ditto to that, except I'm nice mommy despite what my tenure says. Because I do want the splash pad and I've made no secret about that. I agree totally about the community engagement. I think watching this evolve has been amazing. From the very, at this very last meeting, almost everyone who spoke was, was like really enthusiastically in favor of the park and the design that they come up with and--
They applauded.
Yeah, they applauded. I mean, it was, it was great. So, I'm thrilled with what we have here. I love the master plan and I love the phase one. My understanding is that the next step is to be sending this out for bids and I hope when we do that, we had talked about this, I think, at the last meeting, that these project alternates will also be part of the bid process so that we can get prices for everything, for the entire project and then be able to see if there's anything else that we can sneak in. I'm still hoping to get some money somewhere else for this. We have our new grant person coming on board. Hopefully, we can seek some grants on, grants or maybe get some sponsorships. So, I'm very excited to get this moving.
Commissioner Prush.
Two things while I still have a voice. Commendations to everyone who worked on this project, not only the task force, but also the, the community members that, excuse me, contributed so much to the dialogue about this park. It's very, very impressive. I'm, I volunteered to be on the task force for the downtown park and I am, I'm really nervous because you guys have set the bar very, very high for the work that we have to do for the downtown park. So, you, but you've also set forth a, a plan for doing it the right way. And so, if we can somehow follow that in ninety percent as well as you all did, then I think we'll do a good job. The other thing that I wanna note, and it's kind of alluded to tonight, is, is the cost of maintenance, especially of the splash pad. And I know that we're gonna start going out for bids for various elements of the things in this park, but I, I for one will not approve anything close to construction or whatever for any of the splash, for the splash pad itself until we have in place a actual concrete plan for maintenance, whatever, wherever that comes from. And it, people have thrown out a number of ideas, sponsorships, fees and so on and so forth, using the tax revenue from the housing development, whatever. There's lots of options out there. But until we actually have a plan in place, not a whole lot of ideas and not a whole lot of possibilities, but an actual ma- maintenance plan in place that will raise the amount of money that we need to maintain the splash pad, as far as I'm concerned, the splash pad doesn't get built. So, that may be cons, a consensus feeling here as well by everyone on the commission, but I would just wanna make that, that that's, that's my position really clear. If you don't have the maintenance money, then you don't build it.
Commissioner Macy.
I'm just gonna speak for Commissioner Dubuck, our nice daddy, in response to that, to say that he, he has stated before at this table and elsewhere that it was, the previous commission had made a commitment to use this tax revenue. So, I, the fact that now there seems to be a question about what's going to happen to this tax revenue, the whole, the plan that was presented to the, to the citizens were, was that we're gonna use the sale of the money of this to build this beautiful house, beautiful park and then we could have the additional new tax revenue from these, from this new development that would go towards the maintenance. And hopefully, I, I think there will be enough left over for maintenance to continue building on, onto the master plan from phase one where we start. So, I remain committed to, to using that revenue for this. I understand that there's nothing written in stone and that we'll have to make that commitment again and again, but I'm making it again right now on Commissioner Dubuck's behalf.
And I'll just add, yeah, we did make a, a resolution that the incremental tax revenue, one of the few cases in the state of Michigan is when you build something new, you can actually get incremental tax revenue for the community. Look up Prop A Headley Amendment. You'll just be devastated about how our communities are funded. But, yes, that, that was made and there's an amount that we estimate that could be used towards this and I think Commissioner Prush is, is right too. You know, we gotta see what it costs for the whole park and we gotta, you know, make sure we can fund all the operations as well. And I look forward to that discussion when it comes as well. And I think we're gonna have opportunities for grants. We're gonna have opportunities for, you know, sponsorships. You know, the one thing that, that's getting me a little bit is, and just to confirm, one, just an administrative thing, the motion on the table, Commissioner Douglas, is, and I know you know this, I just wanna reiterate it, it's not only phase one, but it's the entire master plan.
Yes, you're right.
Okay. So, just so everyone knows what they're voting on, that's, that's what it is. The second part, what I heard tonight, and I heard it from Mr. Rassel and I heard it from our wonderful landscape architects, is that some of the stuff will be brought before us from time to time if we have to make a position or take a position on whether or not, you know, we talked about the splash pad. You know, conceptually, we want it. Conceptually, here's the amount. Whether we go filtration, whether we go natural water, those things will come back to us as the project evolves, as we get bids back, as we understand the maintenance costs. Am I, am I missing something in this plan? I mean, we have the plan, but some of the elements might need further refining as we kick off the process.
Maybe we can have that discussion once we get the bids back. Having done this construction thing once before when I oversaw the renovation of the library in 2006, pretty much the decisions on putting a hole in the floor, that kinda thing was made by a committee the size of the task force and did not necessarily go back to the library board or the commission. It was sort of like you had your part of money. This is the basic design. Go implement it. Otherwise, some of the decisions that need to be made during a construction project, just like what we did with the parking garage and the library twelve years ago, the project doesn't move as, time is undefeated. We don't meet often enough to get the decisions made in a timely manner sometimes for construction projects.
But if there's a critical audible to save money or to do something, you'd bring it past this table to say, hey, we approved a plan like this, but Eureka, we found something really interesting we think you need to make an audible decision on. That's on the table. We wouldn't expect that every single minutia would have to pass here. We're approving a master plan here in a phase one, but I just wanna make sure you've gotten a sense of some of the things that are important here to the commission. If we find out something relevant to the splash pad, we can, you know, have an opportunity to discuss it if it's, makes a big difference.
Okay.
It's not off the table, is what I'm saying.
I, it's just a speed of what you want the park done.
That's a Greg Rassel saying I've heard for now for like seven years. I love it. You know, my only reservation about this motion is just one, one element. I think it's a great design. I love how it's phased. I love how there's overwhelming community support for this park and I love, you know, the images I have in my, in my head already looking at this, hanging out here with my family and other people's families and just really enjoying this park. The one thing though is, you know, the screening along, it's a hundred thousand dollars. Commissioner LaVassar brought it up. You know, I see the benefit to both the people buying the new homes and the benefit to screening it off for parkgoers, but part of me says we should push that into phase two, only because we could use that hundred thousand dollars. We talked about a couple of elements here about being ADA compliant. We talked about a potential bigger splash pad, not knowing if the maintenance costs go up dramatically for that or not. We talked about, you know, making sure we had some drainage, better drainage on the soccer fields for that second one in the future. So, you know, my, my concern is, is that, you know, the neighbors will kinda figure out when they build their homes, what that screening's gonna look like. And over the few years, then we can decide if we need to respond, you know, if it's all hot, just terrible-looking screening from the new houses there, then we can go buy some whatever. I mean, Commissioner Prush and Commissioner Douglas know the names of all these plants. I just know what they look like. Mostly Commissioner Prush. Tall grasses, whatever it may be, some border there to, to clean it up if we need be on our end. That would be my only suggestion right now is that one doesn't seem as urgent as some of the others and we get to wait and see and see what, you know, the homeowners do and the developer does. And then from there, if we wanna push it into phase two because it's intolerable, we can do that. And we could use that money, perhaps pulling forward some of the elements that every single person in the community's gonna use. It's just a thought.
Commissioner Macy.
So, I'm curious to hear what everyone else thinks about that, but I would also wanna say, what about, so here we have the whole berm. These people are looking out onto a parking lot and the industrial if you don't have those trees. So, I wonder if maybe these are more phase one worthy than these.
I think we're probably getting ahead of ourselves. We need to design and get the park bid out to know what the construction costs actually are because we're just working on estimates right now. And be quite honest, as I was talking about decisions made by the smaller committee instead of coming back to this, this body. If things come in over budget, I would say that probably that tree line's one of the first things to look at changing or decisions made whether you want that hard surface path connecting the east and west or the tree line. You know, those are some of the decisions that'll have to be made once you get actual bid numbers and know what the cost of the different--
So, Mr. Rassel, I'll say it like this then. Okay, we threw some ideas out here at the risk of micromanaging. We're gonna get the bid numbers back. We're gonna approve the plan tonight, I sense. I don't know. Commissioner Macy seems a little iffy on it. Just kidding, it's late. And then you'll bring back some real numbers and say, hey, here's where we guessed right, here's where we guessed wrong. We might need to make a few adjustments based on those numbers and we'll have an opportunity to look at it then. Like you said, hey, the screen's gone because we gotta fund, you know, this other thing that costs more. So, those things you're gonna review and in your best judgment, based on the feedback from this committee, you'll bring it back to us.
I, we can do it that way. When you say this committee, you mean this--
This commission.
It's not the task force.
Well, the task force too, you can go through.
I don't need to go through two. I don't know who's making the final decisions.
Let Mr. Rapinski speak for a minute.
Thank you. As the chair of the task force, I'm prepared to meet again as necessary if some of these items come up and either over budget that we have to make a decision at the task force level where we can discuss it like we have through this whole process before it gets brought back here and then you can just deal with a recommendation from the task force based on what we feel.
Like I said, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I really would like to get this park built within the next couple of years. You know, so I'm trying to cut out a layer, layer of approval. If we, you know, once again, as I said, when we did, when I did the library, I met with a small subcommittee of people, I think the mayor Ellison at the time was sat on that committee along with a representative from the lib, representative from the library board. And I never appeared before the library board, never appeared before this commission in renovating that library and that was a, I think it was a two, close to a million dollar project.
How's this sound, Mr. Rassel? Well, we're gonna approve the plan. Leave it up to your discretion. Based on the gravity of the changes that need to be made, you might not have to go to any board.
Okay.
So, let's wait and see what the bids come back and then, you know, you can internalize it along with Mr. Johnson and make a decision how you think those, if there's any potential changes that need to be made, make a recommendation, the best course of action that allows us to expeditiously get this park done, but do it the right way.
Sounds more in--
Fair enough. I trust you, Mr. Rassel. You've been doing this a long time.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Okay. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes.
Yay.
Moms and dads, boys and girls, we have a splash pad and we're that much closer to a park.
Mr. Macy is ecstatic.
Yeah, I'm ecstatic. Can I go home now?
No.
That brings us to item number ten on this evening's agenda, adoption of the 2018-19 fiscal year strategic plan.
Yes, good evening, mayor and commission.
One second, Mr. Chris.
Mr. Wolf, we're, Mr. Wolf, we're picking up feedback on the microphone. Thank you.
Okay, so as part of our budget process, we go through a strategic planning session. We went through three sessions this year. The product of all this time spent working together has been submitted for your review. You'll notice that this year, like I did last, I kind of organized them under overarching goals. This year, I used more language that finance has used in the past. Finance likes to use this type of language and helps us with submitting for the Government Financial Officers Association budget award. I included in this all the items that were listed as high priority and I also included some of the things from last year that are still being worked on. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Questions? Commissioner Douglas.
There are measures in here that weren't ever part of our discussions.
Right, those were put in as kind of a best way for management to track some of the, some of the actions, a better way to show progress towards meeting the objectives.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Douglas?
Yes. I did not bring my marked-up copy of this, but I bled all over it with a red pen, pencil. There are a lot of things in here that, that I think still need refinement, particularly some of the measures I think that have been set forth aren't really a measure of the outcomes that we want. I think there are places where we should be setting some quantifiable objectives. There are, I, a lot of, I mean, it's like every due, everything is due within the fiscal year, which is like July, and yet I don't know that our staff has, I'm confident our staff does not have the time to implement all of these measures by July. And I would, what I would like to see, and I'd be happy to put it in the form of a motion, that as many commissioners as want to participate in the refinement of this, raise their hand and we delegate that to them to work with the staff to come up with a more precise plan. And I could put that, I could make that a motion.
Can I just add, motion that at the end of it?
Yeah. So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Douglas.
And obviously, I'm volunteering to serve in that group.
Okay, then we have a second by Commissioner Macy.
Okay, then we have a second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion?
I just said it.
Commissioner Macy?
She convinced me.
Anybody else? Commissioner Perush?
I agree with what they are proposing. I really, plus, it's 11:15, and I really think that in terms of making sure that this is a document that we can own, we need to spend a little bit more time discussing some of the aspects of it. I think this is a good, a very good first step in terms of capturing what we all did. But I agree with Commissioner Douglas that there's elements to it that need to be refined, and we're not in any position yet this evening, at least I'm not, to adopt it.
I'll just add, you know, the measures are new. I think if people feel more comfortable taking a second look at them and, you know, I mean, this is something we're committing to, this is something we don't want. I mean, the last group of people we want confusion with is staff. You know, if they go down the wrong path and make us unhappy, we have to blame it all on Don, which I'm totally cool with, but, you know, that might be unfair to Don. And so I support it. I think it gives us a little extra time. I don't think fundamentally we're so far distant with what we talked about or whatever, but there's always, if there's help needing something translated, I think we can afford ourselves the opportunity. I know the question Mr. Johnson's going to ask, so I'll just let him ask it. Mr. Johnson?
You know.
So how are you going to get this feedback? Which three are the commissioners, right?
No, that's not what I was going to ask.
Oh, wow, it's wrong. Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that your concerns right now are with the measures more so than with the goals and objectives.
Oh, there's some goals and objectives that I.
We're about to move into budget.
I understand.
And I'm budgeting based on these objectives.
In, but I'm, there's some need to be wordsmithed. In broad strokes, I think they're, they're correct, but I think there are other places where they do need to, some reworking. But a majority of my objections are to measures, to a lack of quantifiable objectives, and a lack of time-based objectives.
Okay.
Or unreasonable timetables, which is going to buy you time, because a lot of this stuff, like I say, has collapsed into the remainder of the fiscal year, and I just don't see how that's, we're going to be able to swing that.
If I may, it wouldn't be the, the remainder of this fiscal year, it would be for end of fiscal year 19.
So July of 19, year and a half, right?
Even, even so, I mean, a lot of these just say the end of the fiscal year, and I'd like, I think there are places where we should be more specific.
So Commissioner Douglas, I know this wasn't part of your motion, but I want to get the conversation going. I think this is something we need to do quickly, though.
Mm-hmm.
You know, not drag it out for many more months. Our staff needs, you know, to budget, they need to, you know, set direction, do whatever they need to do to implement these things. So what I'm guessing is that anybody here that wants to offer their clarity through Mr. Krison or Mr. Johnson, how do you guys prefer to get this feedback?
If there's going to be a subcommittee, we'll meet with a subcommittee and go through this.
And if I'm the subcommittee?
Is anyone volunteering to be on a subcommittee?
Mr. Dubach.
I just think that as long as, here's the thing, we can keep it simple. I think we try to coordinate to save staff time, and, but just remember, not more than three commissioners with staff, because we don't want to have any sort of quorum going on and giving direction or whatever. I think we want to play it safe with the Open Meetings Act and all of that, so, and I don't even know if we have to post something like this evaluation publicly. Maybe we have to do that if it's more than just providing feedback.
Yes, you do.
Okay, all right, then maybe what we do is we ask staff to set up a meeting with the commission, and we'll give our last feedback, give us enough time to review it. And then anyone that wants to work with, and, you know, the, the meeting doesn't, can we set up a work meeting where if some commissioners don't want to go, if they're satisfied with this, they don't have to go, or you don't have to have a quorum if it's just a work session? Is that?
Yeah.
Because maybe Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Macy and Commissioner Dubach are the only ones that really have issue with, I don't know, I'm just making up stuff. But do we have to have a quorum for work sessions? Or do we actually have to form a subcommittee?
No, to either one, no. I mean, what you could do is you could schedule a work session, and then if you had a quorum there, it could be an actual work session. And if you didn't, then the group could meet on an ad hoc basis.
Okay.
At that point in time. But either way, if it's going to be a work session, you can't take any formal action.
Right. Does that satisfy you, Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's kind of what I envisioned.
All right. I just want to make sure everyone's open to do it, but if we have people that are fine with it, then I don't want to just have a meeting and then everyone goes home and we're expecting to talk about something. So, you guys okay with that? I mean, is that acceptable, is that tolerable to you, Mr. Johnson?
Does it matter?
Nope. In about one minute, it doesn't matter.
Of course, it's tolerable.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Okay, this brings us to item number 11, which is a letter of support for the Transportation Alternatives Program grant application for a regional bicycle share program. I believe this is Mr. Krison.
Yes. So speaking of goals and objectives, last year, the commission set an objective to explore development of a bike share program for the city. Since last fall, the city manager's office has been working with Ferndale, Huntington Woods, Pleasant Ridge, Madison Heights, Oak Park, Berkeley, and Birmingham on the possibility of creating a regional bike share program. We're now at the point where we're talking with Mogo, who promotes the City of Detroit's Bike Share Program as well. So we are now working through Ferndale, who is going to apply for a Transportation Alternatives Program grant to fund the start of a regional bike share program. The idea behind this program is that you could basically use the same system, same type of bike, all the way from Birmingham to downtown Detroit to get around. So we're not, at this point, even really talking costs, but we're, the startup could cost somewhere around $100,000 to $240,000 for us, depending on the types of stations we put in, the amount of stations we put in. But the funding through the TAP is, we're looking at a 70% amount. So right now, we're just looking for a letter of support so that we can move forward with the application.
Mr. Krison, just a real quick clarification. You said $100,000 to $200,000, or $250,000.
Yeah.
And the grant.
Sorry, the grant, I have a hard time, I like to look at people when I talk to them.
The grant would be, cover 70% of that.
Yes.
Cost. Okay, so we'd be looking at $30,000 to $75,000.
Depending on the, the amount of stations we put in, the types of stations, because it's based on the different amenities that each.
Right, and how other regions cooperate and what they do and how that fits together.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner LaVassar?
I, I think you just answered my question. I, I wanted clarification on what that 70% was.
And just for clarification, this is pedal bikes, not motorcycles, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Yep, bicycles.
Yes, I will move approval of the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion, Commissioner Douglas?
No.
Okay, any other discussion? Commissioner LaVassar?
If I'm understanding correctly, there's absolutely no commitment to funding this being made at this time. It's just, let's explore this a little bit.
Yeah, we're committed to being very interested in it, and we know what it costs, and if we see the value and return on, on it, we're, you know, then we approve those expenditures, correct?
Absolutely.
All right, no further discussion, I'll call, oh.
No.
Oh, two thumbs up? Okay, without any further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Okay, this brings us to item number 12 on the agenda, resolution in opposition to Governor Snyder's Michigan Indigenous Defense Commission policy change request. And I believe this is Mr. Krison as well.
Yes, sir. So in an effort to increase the services for indigent defense, indigent defendants across the state, the governor and the state legislature had adopted the Michigan Indigenous Defense Commission Act, creating the MIDC. The MIDC is responsible for establishing minimum standards for indigent defense throughout the state. Basically, the process is when the MIDC adopts a standard, there's like a six-month comment period on it, and then once it's finally approved, local units of government, funded for courts, have six months to put together a, a plan to comply with the standard. The first standards had to do with having counsel at first appearance, visits and assignments of cases within 72 hours, different things with confidential meetings, and increased training and minimum training standards. When we submitted our plan, our plan was looking at costing approximately $390,000. The original legislation mandated that no local units would have to comply unless the state appropriated funds based on these plans. I think across the state, approximately eight million, I think it was eight million, was, was submitted. And during the governor's budget proposal, he is suggesting a change to the legislation mandating that the local share goes from the average of the three years spent on indigent defense prior to the legislation to a $7.25 per capita local share. So in essence, we'd be looking at almost $420,000 a year we would need to spend on indigent defense. Across our region, this is going to be a huge cost and an overburden to local governments and is very likely a violation of, of Headley in that the state's mandating us to do these services, and they're not going to pay for it. At this point, there's not much of a coordinated effort yet to oppose this, but we do have put together a resolution in strong opposition to the governor's proposal and are prepared to submit this to the Michigan Municipal League as well as other cities, villages, and townships across, and counties across the state.
Do we have questions? Mr. Krison? Commissioner Macy?
So there's not a lot of background to the numbers here, and one thing I, I really caught my eye was that the average that we have been spending is $22,000, and now if we do things like provide counsel at the first appearance, suddenly it's $390,000. That's an enormous jump, and I'm just wondering how that could be possible.
The, the local share was based on how much was being spent in the three years prior to the legislation being adopted. During those three years, our local share was approximately $20,000. In the, in the time since the legislation had passed, we were, I think last year was approximately $160,000, but still nowhere near the $390,000 that these new standards are going to require.
So what, what is that, $260,000 or $30, whatever it was?
This, this will come in with counsel at first appearance, additional visits outside, because we have not been providing counsel at first appearance. Typically, if, and, and Mr. Gillum can correct me if I'm wrong, but typically what's been happening at the arraignments is the defendant will basically be told, we're not going to accept a guilty plea, you need to plead not guilty so you can come back and then meet with an attorney.
That's basically correct, yes.
So that's going to increase the amount of cases that will be going on?
So, I'm sorry, it's late. I had a lot of questions and I've forgotten 90% of them, but is this, is the resolution that we have, are we stating that we strongly oppose the new standards?
No.
Or the fact that we're not getting funded for it?
The, the fact that the governor is pulling funding from it. And if you see, there's a line in there asking that the legislature fully funds the compliance So this isn't against the merits of the MIDC, just the, the budget proposal. There's also another thing that I've neglected to mention this evening is that part of the governor's budget proposal is that the funds that are, are recouped from local courts to reimburse for partially indigent defense, 90% of that will be remitted back to the state to pay for this program throughout the state. So in essence, we're being asked to pay more than we initially had asked the state to, to provide us, as well as provide the state the 90% of our funds that we've collected in the past while going forward for partially indigent defense.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Was this a fairly late add to the agenda? I, I try to prepare quite a bit for the, the meetings, and maybe I simply overlooked this item, but I, I don't recall seeing this item on the agenda when it first came to us last week.
It was added, I believe, Wednesday evening, Thursday morning, and this was, there was a budget subcommittee hearing Thursday morning that was taking place. Up in Lansing.
And my apologies, I, I suppose I should have taken another look at the agenda to see how, how it had changed, but I, I just didn't realize that this had been added. And so I, I don't feel as prepared today as I otherwise would be.
Any other questions? Commissioner Perush?
Do we get a sense, so whether or not the Michigan Municipal League and maybe even the Township Association is gearing up to, to take on this issue? Has everyone been caught by surprise by this? Is this?
I do believe they were caught by surprise. From what I understand, according to the league, most local units have not even, are also still caught by surprise and, and aren't even really aware yet about this proposal. From what I understand, the league said that most of the legislators have said they haven't even heard from their locals yet. So the, the league is now, now aware of it, and they're, that a resolution would certainly help them.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Do we have any time sensitivities here?
Well, the governor's budget will, they've historically tried to get it done by June, so. And we're going to be, going forward, we need to implement these, I think, within, I believe it's 180 days after the, our plan is accepted. So we'll, we'll be needing to take care of this for our next fiscal year for the court.
Commissioner LaVassar?
My preference would be to take this up at the next meeting after we've had opportunity to thoroughly review it, and we may have additional questions. My motion would be that we not address this today, but we'll replace it on, on the next meeting's agenda.
Motion by Commissioner LaVassar, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion?
I agree with that.
Commissioner Macy?
So that is what I was going to state as well. I also didn't see it until today on the agenda. I had a little panic moment this afternoon and did some, did a little bit of digging into this. So, I mean, this Michigan Indigenous Defense Commission Act, the, this commission was created because of the lawsuit by the American Civil Liberties Union that, about the deplorable state of indigent defense in Michigan, and this is responding to that. And one of the concerns I had when I read it, which I've sort of indicated already, is that I, I understand that James is saying that it's about the funding, but some of it reads a little bit like it's critical of the commission and that, that this commission isn't supporting the new standards, which I would not feel comfortable signing off on. So I, I think I, I would like to suggest some tweaks over the next week or so, and hope to see it back in the two weeks from now where we can take a look at it.
Commissioner Douglas?
This is an egregious unfunded mandate. When I look at the, the $19 million that we as a city have lost because we were not receiving our, our statutory revenue sharing from the state, and I agree, I have read the articles, I mean, I know that our indigent support or indigent defense services are deplorable, and I hang that right around the neck of the state legislature. And they're trying to push the cost of this back onto us when they've already cut our, our revenue in so many other ways. I mean, I have no difficulty supporting this, disagreeing with your resolution and voting today on a new motion to support our resolution.
Think, oh, Commissioner Macy?
I was just going to say, if I thought this said that, then I would be voting for it.
That's what this says.
That's not what I, that's not what I read.
Commissioner Perush?
I think waiting two weeks is, is fine. I mean, the, the governor is not going to sign a budget, you know, until June. But on the other hand, I think the sooner we act in order to make sure that everybody understands exactly what Commissioner Douglas just said, that we are furious that they're yet again yanking more money out from local governments and making us cover costs that they mandated a long time ago, I'm just as furious as she is. So I have no problem with waiting two weeks, but on the other hand, I, I think we need to make a real firm statement two weeks from now that they're not going, they can't do this to us again.
Commissioner Douglas?
And truth be told, even if this passes, I mean, we as a city could defy them and say, no, we're not going to pay it because it's an unfunded mandate, but let's load MML's guns to help them take their case to the legislature.
Commissioner Macy?
So I, I guess that's part of the concern that I have about this, is that we're saying, you're not going to fund this, we don't care about the principle of indigent defense, so we're not going to pay for it because you didn't fund it. So that's a concern that I have about the way this reads.
So I'll just add, if we need to wait a couple of weeks to make sure that the language matches the sentiments that we're all expressing here, at least that have been expressed, then I think that's cool. It's better to get it right. But I agree with Commissioner Douglas. She used the word 19 million, I thought it's up to 21, 22 million.
My numbers may be a little old, but.
Yeah, I think a year later, I mean, and this is revenue sharing, we say revenue sharing, guess what? Everyone in Royal Oak is a taxpayer of Michigan, and we put money into the pot, and we're not getting it back. And we're getting a lot of mandates, we're getting hit with Headley, we're getting hit, you know, solve your problems, and we're going to take away more things and add more things to your plate. It's just, it's just one more thing coming down on municipalities that make it harder and harder and harder for us to deliver critical. and harder and harder for us to deliver critical services to our residents. And we're charged with doing that, but we're constantly getting handcuffed, and this is just another example. And so, I'm fully in support of sending a message back terse and strong, but making sure that it really conveys the sentiments of everybody here, and if there's some wording changes, then, you know, we need to make that happen. So, I'll be supporting it. Any other discussion? With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, this brings us to item number 13, which was added to the agenda, and I want to thank my fellow commissioners for adding this item to the agenda. So, you know, I apologize if this came tonight. I was even making some tweaks to it earlier today, making sure that it was written. This is, this is item number 13, the Resolution in Support of March for Our Lives. I think you got it right there.
Yeah, I got two, I thought. Somebody didn't get theirs.
So, you know, just a little bit of background, obviously, you know, Commissioner Macy did a good job when making a motion on the agenda, kind of framing up the discussion that our country's having and that every community is having right now about the safety of our children in our schools and what we're gonna do moving forward. And so, I prepared this resolution over the weekend. You know, it's one of these things that you don't really plan for, you never wanna plan for, never thought when I was sitting in an elementary school that I'd ever be a mayor writing a resolution like this. But I do appreciate the fact that we have it here to discuss tonight. I think this is, we're in a serious crisis in this country, and I think that we don't have a lot of tools in our toolbox to make extreme changes, but I do think we have a platform and a voice here to be heard and for everyone else to hear us. And so, I put this in front of you tonight. I'm gonna read it, just so everyone, you know, can read it as well and take some time to understand it, and then from there, I look forward to some discussion on the matter. Resolution in Support of March for Our Lives. Whereas the United States leads the world in the number of mass shootings defined as four or more people being shot during one incident, not including the shooter. And whereas statistics from Gun Violence Archives reveal that there have been 1,627 mass shootings in 1,870 days. And whereas perpetrators of mass shootings prey on the most vulnerable of our society, making schools their targets. And whereas since January 1st, 2018, there have been at least seven shootings in American schools resulting in injury or death, and a total of 208 since Columbine School shooting on April 20th, 1999. And whereas since this crisis became evident and debate commenced regarding the role mental illness contributes to mass shootings, neither Congress nor the state legislator have found the political will to reduce access to military-grade assault weapons or enact any other effective gun control policies. And whereas calls to fortify our schools and armed professional educators do nothing to address the true cause of this uniquely American problem. And whereas the Parkland survivors have decided that enough is enough and have organized a March for Our Lives to take place on Saturday, March 24th. And whereas students from around the country and the world will unite on March 24th, 2018 to show their resolve and demand from legislation, legislators and comprehensive gun control. And whereas we believe all children deserve safe and healthy environments to pursue their education and that it's our responsibility to provide them with this most basic necessity. And whereas we believe children in Royal Oak are no less at risk than anywhere else in the country, now therefore, be it resolved, the City of Royal Oak stands with the students and children of our community by demanding that our state and federal elected officials enact sensible gun control policies. And be it further resolved, the City of Royal Oak invites all residents to join in showing support on March 24th, 2018, as we all come together for our children and their future and join them on the March for Our Lives. So, that's the resolution. I think it's poignant. I think it's direct, and I think from this commission, it's gonna send a message not only to our constituents, but to folks around us, that we have a platform here, we have a microphone, and we need resolution. Commissioner Douglas?
I'll move support of the resolution.
We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas, we have support by Commissioner Macy. Discussion?
Uh, well put, Mayor, well put.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lavassar?
I, I think the general sentiments of the resolution are, are good. We, we wanna protect our, our citizens, we wanna protect our children. I do believe it's a little bit overly broad. If this was focusing on making sure that guns don't get into the hands of mentally unstable people or perhaps young people who are not mature enough to handle the great responsibility of it, I think I could support it, but I think this is just a little bit overly broad and just comes across as, you know, we're supporting gun control in general without being more specific on, on a very complicated issue. So, as it's worded, I can't support it, but I do support the general sentiment. I do support many of the elements, but I think it's just a little bit too broad.
Thank you, Commissioner Lavassar. Any other discussion? I'll just add, you know, with all due respect, I don't see it being very complicated at all. I mean, quite honestly, we've taken no action as a country, as a state, even as a municipality to address any of the excuses that we afford and put upon ourselves to say that this sort of, and this number of mass shootings are acceptable in any way whatsoever. We look to mental illness, and yeah, we have a lot of mentally ill people in this country, but what have we done to treat the mentally ill? We've defunded them, we've taken away their resources. In Michigan, we've defunded communities and cities and counties. So, in my opinion, until we have all the answers and all the solutions, you have to take the one thing away in the formula that's creating this havoc, and that's these milit- great, military-grade assault weapons. And I'm not the only one that shares this opinion. I know a vast majority of Royal Oakers do, and, you know, like I said, when we talked about this during the community forum ahead of the election, we said, "What do we have within our, our means?" Well, we don't have, the state has stripped us of a lot of power over the years and a lot of money over the years, but we do have as a voice. And so, I appreciate anyone that opposes it, but I think to me, this is not a complicated topic, and I think we just, you know, when our children are the ones taking greater action than us, I think we have to question ourselves as adults and as leaders in the community and make strong statements. We're at a point where we need to do that. My wife's an educator, she's in the schools, I have kids in the schools, Commissioner Macy has kids in the schools, Commissioner Dubbuck has kids in the schools. I gotta tell ya, you know, it's always in the back of your mind. And as a parent and as somebody who took an oath to protect this city, I'm gonna do whatever I can to express my opinion, and it sounds like a handful of commissioners up here are gonna do the same. So, I, I don't see any reasonable solutions out there at this point, other than we gotta stop the fuel in this fire, and I think we need to make our voices heard. Commissioner Dubbuck? Commissioner Douglas? I've been fasting today and I'm tired.
Starts with a D, right?
Too many Ds.
I, this is, the, well, there are two resolutions, here are two points for resolution. One is that our state and federal elected officials enact sensible gun control policies, a broad statement that certainly embraces what Commissioner Lavassar has proposed, and yet we haven't seen that, that happen. I mean, we haven't seen anything either, even of that nature. And secondly, just supporting young people as they come forward and to, and express their feelings on March 24th. I think that's a pretty benign statement, and I, I find it hard to believe that people wouldn't agree.
Further discussion? Commissioner Macy?
I'll just say that, tired of this, after this last one especially, and even if we aren't all agreeing now about what the cause is, I hope that everyone who thinks that they have an idea what the cause is will, will take steps to address what that is. So, if, if you're not feeling like this is it, I hope you're thinking about what, what it is and taking steps to address it, because doing nothing isn't an option anymore.
Agreed. All right, I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. All right. I believe this brings us to items number D, E, and F from the consent agenda. We'll start with item number D. Mr. Lavassar, this was your request.
Thank you. It, it is quite late, and unfortunately, our finance director could not be here. She, she had very good reasons, I'll simply say, for the record, for not being here. I did have questions or concerns over a couple of matters, specifically Duncan Parking Technologies' $88,800 quote, and I simply don't have enough information to feel comfortable with regard to that. She did send me an email that talked a little bit about that. It looked like we're proposing paying for a very extended five-year warranty on some handheld devices, and, you know, I, I've, I've always been of the opinion, when you go to the electronics store, you don't pay for the extended warranties, but this was, if, if I recall correctly, I don't have it right in front of me, around $11,000 for the five-year?
Well, I, I... The police department PO, so I, I don't know that Julie would have much for you on this actual item, but the, we need to upgrade our parking syst-, our parking enforcement tools. Our current handhelds have been breaking down at a very fast rate, they're over 15 years old, and they're just not designed for the technology we have and the meters we currently use. The, the upgrade for 10 meters is about $26,000. That includes cases, batteries, and a charging dock. The warranty is about $12,000. The big expense though is the software that comes. The software has to tie in with the court, our software, that's $33,000. So, I'm not sure what, if, if you have a specific question about them, we, we get service warranties on almost everything we get. This isn't a washing machine or something like that, that when, when these things go down, we need to call people in to have them fix, and that's what the warranty's for.
Is, is this a new, is this a different type of equipment than we otherwise have had?
It's, it is an upgrade of our existing equip, equipment. We'll have a brand-new handheld that won't even look anything like the other one. I, I can tell you, when we were going through this, we did research other companies to see if we should be doing, moving away from Duncan and is there something else out there? Duncan is the biggest, and the, we, we talked to a couple of other vendors who promised us that they could create something that would be, fit our needs, but there was no entity they could point us to that's actually using it. So, we didn't have any proof it's actually working. Duncan is used in Detroit, East Lansing, eastern cities that write an awful lot of parking tickets, so we felt the best course of action was just to upgrade our existing system, our auto sites.
Yeah, the, the question I had, and I know it's quite late and I'm nitpicking a little bit, so my apologies, but basically, for, for the cost of the extended warranty would be like, essentially, it'd be like purchasing five additional, right now, we're budgeting for 10, but it would be like buying five additional of, of the handhelds for, for the cost of, of the warranty itself. And so, I simply question whether that truly is a, the, the best use of, of those resources, if, if that extended warranty is appropriate. But I don't know the history of this equipment and how often you have to call in for service or what the cost of that service would be. I, I just know generally speaking, purchase of extended warranties on electronics is, is not typically recommended.
Well, a service warranty is, I guess, for the kind of use we do, we, like I said, we have it on almost all of our equipment, because there's only one entity that can work on it, and so if you don't have the warranty, you're just tied to what they're gonna charge you. And so, you could say, "Yeah, well, if something happens to it, just replace it." But these things are used a lot, they're in all kinds of weather, they, they get a lot of use. I think in this case, and I guess most of our law enforcement use, the equipment's used very hard, so the warranty makes sense.
Any other questions? Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add, I have no idea how this equipment works at all, but what I do know is how hard and how great our police department works, and I know if you guys are recommending it, and it's critical, the warranty is critical for the job that you do, and it's not breaking the bank here. I mean, every day, we're making expenditures, and every day, we're making Royal Oak safer and safer, although parking tickets arguably aren't gonna necessarily make Royal Oak safer all the time. But, I mean, you know, Chief O'Donohue, you were here, Don Johnson, you were here, I mean, you guys have helped us out along the way with the fiscal crisis of 2008. You've helped us be one of the safest communities in Michigan and reduce the crime rate by 50% in 10 years. You know, you have my trust on small expenditures like this, so. Commissioner Douglas?
I'll move approval of the purchasing res- resolution as submitted.
We have support by Commissioner Macy. Discussion?
We have first-rate professional staff. This decision has been vetted by the chief, by the purchasing department, by the finance director, and I, as a, as their supervisor essentially, or as the person who supervises their supervisor, am confident that they have done the due diligence and that this is a reasonable expense, that all of these are reasonable expenses.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
I had my hand up, but you didn't turn around, and that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's fine. What is the lifespan of these devices? Like, how long are we expecting them to be usable?
I, I can't say for certain. Our, our current ones, we've had for about 15 years, so...
And that's what I was kind of basing it off, so, now, is this warranty a yearly warrant?
It's, it's a 60-month warranty. If they're still us, if, if when that comes, gets, comes close to the time it expires, we'd probably look to extend it. You know, one of the issues we have is we don't have the time for all the equipment we have to really vet every vendor, and, you know, i- i- it's just too, too much with our equipment, so when we get the warranties on our in-car cameras, our computers, things like that, so when there's a problem, it's fixed and we can get back to doing what we're supposed to be doing.
And I appreciate that, and, but these are questions I would ask Best Buy if I was buying a TV or a computer, or, I can't remember the last time I did that, but, um, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Lavassar?
I, I appreciate the good work that the police department does. Is, is there a, but, but I do ask this question, if there's some time sensitivity here where we have to decide on this. I'm still not sold on, on that warranty, and it may seem like a small amount of money, but it's our job to, to look at these, these dollars and, and make sure that we're being good stewards of the taxpayers' funds.
The equipment, like I said, it is breaking down quicker. We're having challenges with our smart meters, particularly with the kiosks. We're hoping this will help us with that, because the, the way we have to enforce them currently is very cumbersome and time-consuming. What this also comes for is the software updates, and we're having some issues with the courts software, which was something that our IT staff developed in-house, that they've had some challenges with their scoff laws. So, they, we wouldn't be asking you for it if we didn't need it, but, um, the, the equipment's ready to be replaced, is the simple answer.
All right. Yeah, I'll just, you know, make one suggestion. I think this was good dialogue, but, you know, I'd appreciate it. I mean, you know, this was out on the, you know, posted on Tuesday, one of the items that wasn't updated, so, you know, here, we should be reflecting, and if we have some questions, it's always fine, you know, if we, if we didn't get them answered, but some of these questions, like with warranties, and, and the reason, you know, I always encourage the commissioners to reach out to staff and they'll get you answers, so we can, you know, move quickly here. So, I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Mayor, if I can follow up on that statement?
No, we're gonna call for the vote. It's late.
I appreciate that, but you're basically saying I haven't done my homework, and, and I did...
I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
I did reach out to staff on this issue.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
I'm number E, Mr. Lavassar. Commissioner Lavassar?
Oh, which item is this? I, I simply, because this, and this is with regard to some changes in, in the budget, and, and there's some seven-figure changes, I, I simply don't have enough information to go on. Unfortunately, our, our finance director is not here to explain. If there's no time sensitive, sensitivity on this, I would suggest that we put this matter over until, until our finance director is available. That would be my motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lavassar, second by Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Go ahead.
And then I have a comment.
Commissioner Lavassar, anything more to add?
That's it.
Commissioner Perush?
The only thing that I would add is perhaps we should include with that the next item, item number F, because I have a feeling that the questions that pertain to the pension system and actuarial evaluation report are also questions that are gonna be directed at Ms. Rudd, and she's not here this evening. So, I, I guess I would suggest to Commissioner Lavassar that his motion include also item number F.
I, I'm fine with that if, if, if there's no objections from anyone here, but that would be my motion. Is there an urgency on item number F? Just approval of...
Just approval of the report?
Just a receive and file as far as what you're going to do with it, but, you know.
I would feel more comfortable if Ms. Rudd was here to discuss that report. I'd rather we postpone discussion of that as well, as Commissioner Perush has suggested.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Perush?
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson?
I would invite him. Would you want us to actually invite the actuary?
I think there would be value to that.
I mean, look, I'm just going to interject here. I think we have a meeting in, what, two weeks? So I think if there's any questions you have within the next two weeks any commissioner has, I highly recommend we get them to staff. I don't really want to use our time up here. We have so many things going on, and to turn our commission meeting into a Q and A session is not as valuable as making sure we get, if there are legitimate questions, that we get them answered ahead of time. And if there's any residual questions or new questions that come up, that's perfectly fine. But, you know, I just want to make sure that we don't wait for two weeks or three weeks to the next commission meeting and then, you know, have the grand inquisition with the actuary and Ms. Rudd. If there's something we can do to prepare staff, I mean, again, these are folks, they're professionals, they shouldn't be scrambling, they work for us, we're proud of them, we shouldn't take them off-guard, we should give them all the information ahead of time, and I know we've all done that. So I'm just asking, I mean, I can support this motion so long as everyone here commits that, you know, we're going to do our best to get our questions ahead of time so staff is prepared, so we don't have simply a Q and A session and a learning session, but we actually have discussion and debate.
Commissioner Lavassar?
Yeah, my, and I'm all for doing homework in advance, and as Mr. Johnson knows, this is something I reached out to him and Ms. Rudd several, several days ago. I do believe that in addition to gathering information for this body, it's important that the information be made available to the public, to the people who watch these proceedings, so that they're well-educated, that they're well-knowledgeable about the proceedings and the business of the city. So it's not sufficient simply for myself to exchange a few emails with staff. It's also important that certain very key vital information about the business of the city be made easily available to the public. And that's, that's why I believe it's important that the actuary or Ms. Rudd be available.
Yep, and we have the reports here too, and I just want to make sure we don't, we focus less on asking questions and appearing to be grandstanding and more focused on, you know, if we do get those questions answered, making a position with those answers and, you know, using the time to debate and vote.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Everyone understands what the motion is? Okay. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
And that included F.
Let me just make sure so we don't, okay, good. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda. And if there is a, if there's no other business for the City of Royal Oak, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. Wow. Wait, not everyone at once, okay?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Is there any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. We're adjourned.